Frontline team member. Known for his unwavering positive attitude and strong work ethic, Joe constantly goes above and beyond to ensure every visitor's experience is nothing short of exceptional. Whether meticulously preparing spaces inspiring his team or contributing to the seamless execution of events, he tackles every task with a smile and a positive attitude, leaving a lasting impact on everyone around him. Congratulations once again, Joe.
Well, Joe, congratulations from all of us and from the entire city of Dubuque. We're excited you were able to join us here tonight to be able to accept the award again. Because I know you got it at the breakfast the first time, but it was nice to be able to do this publicly. So congratulations and thanks for all your work.
Thank you guys.
We'll move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is LGBTQIA+ Pride Month.
Okay, and I know we have several people here to accept this award this evening, so come on up. Or this proclamation, I should say. The awards were already happened.
So my name is Chuck Harris, Dubuque Pride, 2473 Jackson Street, just in case you need that, but I'll be here.
Ally Levisor, 1318 Jackson.
Timothy Grigger, 2282 Harold Street.
Indigo Perry, 2920 Central Avenue.
Would you like to say a few words before I read the proclamation?
We do really appreciate the city doing this on behalf of all the LGBT persons in the community. It really strikes that push out there to say that Dubuque is a welcome and opening, open city for everybody here in the community. So thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you all for being here again this year to accept this proclamation. Excited for Pride Fest coming up here this weekend?
That is true. Saturday is Pride Festival. We've also got the Pride event at the end of the month in Jackson Park as well, so keep on the lookout for all those events throughout the entire month.
Yeah, well, thanks for all your work on planning the events throughout the entire month, and thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque proclamation. Whereas the city of Dubuque is a progressive and inclusive community that celebrates culture and heritage and supports efforts to ensure everyone has the right to live in conditions of dignity, respect, and peace; and whereas the city of Dubuque strives to offer our residents a safe community and to put an end to taunting, bullying, and intolerance; and whereas the city of Dubuque advocates for the elimination of all forms of discrimination and displays a commitment to the equal treatment for all, of all people; we recognize the need for intersectionality and work toward social justice as we understand there is no true equality until there is equity for all; and whereas the city of Dubuque understands the importance of LGBTQ+ people and have access to excellent healthcare in LGBTQ-affirmative environments; the necessity to have the legal and institutional freedom to pursue their own lives as they wish; and the need to have their liberty and safety affirmed by society; and whereas the celebration of Pride Month brings together dedicated and committed community members, allies, volunteers, businesses, and organizations to celebrate diversity, inclusion, and the contributions of LGBTQ+ individuals; and whereas this aims to foster community engagement, promote awareness, and advocate for equality through entertainment, education, and celebration with programming that highlights the vibrancy and resilience of the LGBTQ+ community in an environment which is inclusive and welcoming to all; and whereas this proclamation sends a positive message of validation to LGBTQ+ residents that the city embraces these individuals and their families as a part of the community. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the city of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage the residents of Dubuque to observe this month with programs, activities, and ceremonies in recognition of our city's diversity, including the Dubuque Pride Festival on June 7th at the Town Clock Plaza and the Pride Rally on June 29th at Jackson Park. Nice to see you. Thanks for being here. Marie's got us. Yep. Somebody's always got her back.
I don't think this is for a classroom.
Thanks, Marie. Thanks, everybody.
Our second proclamation is Juneteenth National Independence Day.
All right, I believe Carla Escobar and Mary Ann Konzett are here to accept this proclamation. And Anthony. Hello, Amy.
Carla Escobar, 707 Ree Street.
Mary Ann Konzett, 16462 Coventry Lane.
Anthony Allen.
I just want to say thank you for the continued support for this Juneteenth event time and time again. So thank you for everyone and our city council members. I appreciate the support.
Well, and thank you for planning the event every year. It's been great. This has now become a national holiday, and we get to make it a community holiday as well, and it's become bigger and bigger every year, and it's always such a fun day and a fun week and another celebration throughout the month of June. So thank you very much for all the work you put into it, and thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque proclamation. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas finally received word that they were free from bondage; and whereas Juneteenth commemorates this day when those who were formerly enslaved began to build new lives and new traditions that we honor today; and whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States and commemorates African-American achievement and reminds us of our willingness to learn and emerge from our darkest moments with hope, purpose, and resolve; and whereas on this commemoration, we recommit ourselves to the work of equity, equality, and justice, and we celebrate more than a century of African-American resilience in the city of Dubuque and beyond; and whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed the bill making Juneteenth the 11th American federal holiday and the first to obtain legal observance as a federal holiday since Martin Luther King Jr. Day was designated in 1983; and whereas since 2023, the city of Dubuque has recognized Juneteenth as a paid holiday; and whereas Dubuque's Multicultural Family Center is hosting a Juneteenth Celebration Weekend from Friday, June 13th through Sunday, June 15th at Jackson Park. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the city of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 19th of June 2025 as Juneteenth National Independence Day in the city of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge residents to support and endorse the practice and policy of equity and freedom for all. Thank you so much, everybody. You see him? Marie, Chuck, yes? Okay, Chuck's paying it forward. Here we go. Thank you. It's a good thing we all know each other, so else we can just pass these pictures back and forth.
We will now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Before we start, Eric, if you wouldn't mind, could you please take the live feed off of our screens up here while we're doing the meeting? Thank you. All right, do we have anyone here in chambers who is, who would like to remove any consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, we have anyone virtually, Adrian?
No one virtually.
All right, thank you. All right, back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are items set for public hearing. We have seven. First is setting a public hearing for the granting of a storm sewer utility easement to switch development at JFK LLC for June 16th, 2025. Second is setting a public hearing on the proposed amended and restated lease between the city of Dubuque and Vitara USA Grain LLC for June 16th, 2025. Third is proceedings to set public hearing on June 16th, 2025 for the issuance of not to exceed $15 million sewer revenue capital loan notes State Revolving Loan Fund Program Old Mill Road Lift Station Project Phase Two for June 16th, 2025. Fourth is proceedings to set public hearing on June 16th, 2025 for the issuance of not to exceed $3,600,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes Planning and Design Loan State Revolving Loan Fund Program Old Mill Phase Three Project Catfish Creek Sanitary Interceptor Sewer System Middle Fork for June 16th, 2025. Fifth is proceedings to set public hearing on June 16th, 2025 for the issuance of not to exceed $3,400,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes Planning and Design Loan State Revolving Loan Fund Program Old Mill Phase Four Project Catfish Creek Sewer Shed Improvement South Fork for June 16th, 2025. Sixth is proceedings to set public hearing on June 16th, 2025 for the issuance of not to exceed $500,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes Planning and Design Loan State Revolving Loan Fund Program Track Line Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction Project for June 16th, 2025. And seventh is resolution setting public hearing on the proposed development agreement with Plastic Center Incorporated for June 16th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for June 16th, 2025.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Rousell, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are boards and commissions. We have application review for the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission, the Civic Center Advisory Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Park and Recreation Advisory Commission, Resilient Community Advisory Commission, Transit Advisory Board, Zoning Advisory Commission, and then appointment to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, well, we have a busy one here tonight, so this might take us just a few minutes. So I appreciate everybody's patience. I'm going to go through every, every single applicant and ask if anyone has any words they'd like to say about that applicant. So if nobody does, we'll move along quickly, but I do want people to, I would encourage anyone who does have anything to talk about that you'd like to speak to any of these applications, please do come forward. So our first up is the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term through 2027, one three-year term for a business professional through 2028, and two three-year public member terms through 2028. The first term, I should say, was an at-large term. We have a number of applicants here, so Jim Alby is our first. Do we have anyone here to speak to that application? Please.
My name is Jim Alby. I live at 535 West Fifth Street, right up the hill. So I'm looking to join the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission. I'm a local artist and have performed in the area for about 15 years. I have a background in music, politics, and leadership. I'm passionate about the transformative power art and culture have on our community, support amplifying underrepresented voices, promoting accessibility, and encourage cross-cultural dialogue, and thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Jim Alby. I'll get that right next time. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Shirley Davis Orwell. I'm here to speak to that application. And Adrian, you can just chime in if there's anybody virtually.
No one virtually, but Ms. Davis Orwell did submit written input.
Thank you very much. All right, Nick Holder's our next applicant. I'm here to speak to that application, okay?
Also submitted written input.
Thank you very much. Aaron Hayfield is our next applicant. Anyone here? Okay. Bree Hernandez. All right, moving on then to Mary Loney Michelle. All right, thank you. Rodrigo Marin. Okay, and I apologize for this pronunciation. I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name. Sarah Degiree. All right, and then finally, I believe on this one is Jessica Ochoa. Yes, please, come on up.
Hi, my name is Jess Ochoa. I live at 1970 Hale Street. I'm super excited about this opportunity. I currently serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and this is my second term doing that, and I love being a part of a commission because it's my opportunity to be involved a little bit in city government. I love being a voice for the people of Dubuque. Why I'm interested in the Arts Commission is because I am a living and working artist here in Dubuque. I run my own little art business. I instruct art courses at Bluff Strokes Art Center, and I just see this as a really great opportunity to be a stronger advocate for local artists, and one great thing about commissions is you get to know what's going on, what's coming in, and so I really want to be a part of this so I can be a bigger supporter for my colleagues. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Jess, for your comments. Okay, well, then we are going to move on to the next commission, which is the Board of Library Trustees. So we have one four-year term through July 1st, 2029 here, and we have three applicants. So Tom Brennan is the first applicant. Anyone to speak to that application? There, okay. Next up is Jessica Connery. Please.
Hi, I'm Jessica Connery, 4612 Camelot Drive. I'm here to introduce myself and express my interest in serving on the Board of Library Trustees. I'm a resident of Dubuque, a lifelong library user, and a firm believer in the important role that public libraries play in strengthening communities. I'm a mom to two elementary-age daughters and my regular visitors to both the Carnegie Stout and Asbury Libraries. I'm also an avid revert reader and a member of two local book clubs. Since moving to Dubuque from Texas two years ago, I've been eager to get more involved in the community, and the library feels like a natural fit. Its mission and values closely align with my own. I recently attended the May Board Meeting and left feeling inspired by the commitment to serving the community. Professionally, I bring 16 years of experience in HR leadership at Fortune 500 companies, most recently managing a team of HR business partners at Amazon Web Services. My background includes strategic planning, policy development, and organizational change, all of which I believe would be valuable in this role. Throughout my career, I've had the privilege of supporting global employees from a wide range of cultural, socioeconomic, and professional backgrounds. I'm committed to fostering inclusive spaces where everyone feels welcome. I strongly support the library's mission to enrich lives through information and experiences, and I'd be honored to contribute to that work as a trustee. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jessica, for your comments. Okay, last up then for this, this one for the Board of Library Trustees is Nicole O'Brien. Anyone here? Okay, all right. Moving on then to the Civic Center Advisory Commission. So we have three three-year terms that go through 2028, and we have four applicants. So Mackenzie Blau is the first. Anyone here to speak to that application? Colleen Myers. Next up is Ashley Regan. Anyone to speak to that application? And then finally, Sarah Tandy would be the last one on that commission. Okay, we'll move on then to the Historic Preservation Commission. Here we have one three-year term through 2028, and we have one applicant, Rick Studer. Do we have anyone to speak to that application? All right, moving on then to the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission. So three three-year terms through 2028. First is Jason Hinkle. Anyone here to speak to that application? Next would be Josh Jorgensen. Okay, we have three more applicants for this one. Lori Allendick.
And Lori did submit written input.
Thank you very much. Maya Schaefer. Okay, and then finally, Greg Swift. Okay, we have three more commissions here. So the first up is the Resilient Community Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term through 2028, one applicant, Jacob Colehouse. Anyone here to speak to that application? All right, then I'm going to move on to the Transit Advisory Board. We have one three-year term through 2027, and one applicant, Gary Wernimont. Anyone here to speak to that application? All right, then our final commission for the evening is the Zoning Advisory Commission. We have two three-year terms through 2028 and four applicants. First is Matthew Mulligan. Second would be Patrick Norton. Okay, third is Dylan Schwering.
Can I speak for that?
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Dylan Schwering. I live at 1741 Dexter Street. Good evening. First, thank you for giving me this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm applying for the zoning advisory commission, as you just said, because I have a very strong desire to help continue the diverse and equitable growth of Dubuque, of this very beautiful city here. I've just moved to Dubuque late last year, and instantly was struck with how kind and friendly the residents are here, and then how beautiful and vibrant the city is, and I just want to be able to contribute to this. I just completed the school year working as a para at senior high school, and I am pursuing my degree in computer science. Through my studies, I have developed a passion for data-driven decision-making, and at the same time, working with the students has given me a deep appreciation for the need to combine that decision-making with compassion and understanding of the diverse needs of our community. I believe my technical background and experience working with a wide range of people will bring a fresh perspective to the commission's work, and I value listening, listening to the community and working with that wide range of people. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, well, thank you, Dylan, for your comments. Okay, and our final applicant for the evening is Casey Stoich. Do we have anyone to speak to that application?
And Mr. Mayor, I just, just want to acknowledge no input for that application, but I failed to mention that under the Arts and Cultural Affairs that Sarah Nigard did submit written input as well, so I just wanted to mention that for the record.
Thank you very much. Okay, Sarah, okay. Thank you very much, Adrian. Okay, so before I move on, let me just say, I mean, obviously, we have more applicants than we have positions for many of these boards and commissions. That's a really good thing. So thank you very much for everyone who's stepping up and stepping into these roles. I think a few people said it in, in your comments of how important it is to serve our community in that way, and we sincerely appreciate the fact that so many people want to step up and do that. So as we make these difficult decisions here in the next meeting, we will keep that all in mind and definitely just know you have our appreciation even if you're not chosen in this round. I encourage you to continue to step forward because there's a good chance that there will be other openings and either on the same commission or other potential boards and commissions that may be of interest to you. So thank you again for, for your interest in this, and we look forward to making those appointments. Thank you, Adrian. We can, oh, actually, I can move on to the next one, right? This is a, so the next one is actually an appointment. It's the, so this one is a mayoral selection of an appointment to the Civil Service Commission. I informed the council in these chambers in a public meeting a few weeks ago that my choice for the Civil Service Commission to fill a one-year, or I'm sorry, one four-year term through April 6, 2029, is applicant Michael Jackson. So at this moment, I would entertain a motion, please.
And just to jump in, and just to make sure that the motion is correct, because this is the mayor's selection, the suggested disposition is a motion to approve that selection.
Thank you, Adrian.
So move to approve.
Ms. Farber?
Second.
I've got a motion by Ms. Farber to approve the selection, and a second by Mr. Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero, so Michael Jackson is appointed to the Civil Service Commission.
We'll move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is resolution adopting the Cedar Cross Road Urban Revitalization Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Sprank and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the resolution adopting the Cedar Cross Road Urban Revitalization Plan. The plan recommends a 10-year period of 100% abatement on the increased property value due to a shortage of housing inventory and significant development costs. September 2022, following a housing study which indicated the need for over 1,100 housing units before the year 2030, the Dubuque City Council approved the expansion of incentives to be offered to developers of housing units. This slate of incentives included the creation of urban revitalization areas in order to facilitate the development of multifamily housing. Previously, urban revitalization areas had been used in Dubuque for low-income housing tax credit projects. However, the city council approved the use of urban revitalization areas for market-rate and workforce housing. At that time, the recommended abatement schedule for market-rate units was a declining scale over a 10-year period. However, due to the ongoing dearth of housing inventory, the decreased value of abatement under Chapter 404 due to the school district levy being excluded from the allowed abatement by the Iowa State Legislature, and significant development costs for a proposed project along Cedar Cross Road, including off-site public improvements on the street and for sanitary sewer extensions, staff is recommending the creation of an urban revitalization area that provides 10 years of 100% abatement on the increased value of the property. From 2010 to 2020, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, of the 99 counties in the state of Iowa, only 30 grew in population, and only eight of those grew by more than 5,000 people. Of those eight counties that grew by more than 5,000 people, only Dubuque County, of course where the city of Dubuque is headquartered, and Scott County, where it's the city of Davenport, were outside the corridor of Polk County to Story County, which is Des Moines to Ames, where Iowa State University is, and the corridor of Johnson County, I'm sorry, Johnson County to Lynn County, which is Iowa City, the University of Iowa, to Cedar Rapids corridors. So only Davenport and Dubuque were outside those corridors. From 2020 to 2024, according to the U.S. Census Bureau's vintage 2024 population estimates, only seven counties in the state of Iowa showed a population increase of more than 900 people, and only Dubuque County, which is 934 increase, was outside the Polk County, Story County, and Johnson County, Lynn County corridors. This means that according to the U.S. Census Bureau, Dubuque County population grew by almost 6,000 people from 2010 to 2024, approaching 100,000 population. Since July 1st, 2022, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation reports there has been over $805 million in new construction in Dubuque County, creating over 1,000 jobs. The Long Range Planning Advisory Commission, finding consistency with the 2017 Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan, voted for in favor, none against, and two abstentions to recommend approval of this district. A development agreement with the developer, CC15 LLC, has been already approved by the city council. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the resolution adopting the Cedar Cross Road Urban Revitalization Plan. Do we have any public input on this item this evening? Seeing none here, virtually. Thank you, Adrian. Okay, back to the table for any discussion then. Seeing none. I will point out for everyone who's listening and watching that we have been talking about this for a while, this particular project. We already have the development agreement in place, as you saw. This urban revitalization plan change is something that often happens when we have those development agreements and with housing and things like that. So it's potentially one of the reasons we don't have a whole lot of discussion in this moment on this one. All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is resolution approving a development agreement with 1301 Central LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approval of a resolution approving a development agreement, including the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations, or TIF, by and between the city of Dubuque and 1301 Central LLC for the redevelopment of 1301 Central Avenue. The developer is proposing to create 30 new residential rental units in the upper stories, Project will cost approximately $8 million and represents a major investment in the downtown area. Key elements of the development agreement are as follows. Number one, the developer to make a capital investment of approximately $8 million to create 30 new residential units and seven commercial storefronts. Number two, city to award a downtown rehabilitation grant in an amount not to exceed $35,000 for costs associated with the restoration of the building's facade. Number three, city to award a downtown housing creation grant in an amount not to exceed $300,000, which is $10,000 per unit up to 30 units. Number four, city to award a 15-year tax increment financing incentive in the form of semi-annual rebates. The expected tax increment financing incentive will likely not exceed $1 million. The development agreement requires the developer to accept applications from prospective tenants with housing choice vouchers who are otherwise qualified prospective tenants. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approval of a resolution, a resolution approving a development agreement, including the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa, and 1301 Central LLC for the redevelopment of 1301 Central Avenue. Do we have any public input on this item this evening? Seeing none here, anything virtually?
Nope.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, back to us for any discussion then.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber first, then Mr. Resnick.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a, a shout out to the developer, Chris Miller, on this for his creative thought about this really wonderful building down in that central, central 13th and Central area. And it will be, I think, a much-needed infill for housing that is greatly needed in the downtown sector, and will certainly accommodate all the future housing needs that we will have based on some of the commercial developments and some of the development by the University of Dubuque down there. So, I just wanted to give him a shout out with appreciation.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I, um, thank you. I saw that Mr. Lyons was here, and I don't see him out here now, but I do see Ms. Connors here. So, I was hoping to ask her if she could give us maybe some historical background of this effort tonight, and then how this, how we're, the city is, is working with Dubuque Initiatives to try and bring the Central Avenue of rejuvenation to life.
Yeah, thank you, Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. This property has had several attempts to create housing. A different developer took a shot at it last year, applied to the state for a number of different types of tax credits, was unsuccessful with the first round, adjusted their plan to be able to apply for a different type of tax credit, was unable to make the numbers work, and so decided to, to not go forward with that project. That's when Chris Miller stepped in. He's purchased the property. He's looking to make 30 apartments and then some ground floor commercial retail space. So, we're looking forward to that, and he's also applied for some state tax credits as well. So, we're looking forward to hopefully a, a good reply on that.
And I would just try and expand if, if you don't mind. So, Dubuque Initiatives is a, a local not-for-profit, and as a matter of fact, in the 1980s, when they were formed, they built the first industrial park on the west end of the city of Dubuque. And then they turned their attention to downtown. And so, they helped with the redevelopment of the lower Main Street area, First to Fourth Street. They were a part of the impetus for that. And so, now they've turned their attention to Central Avenue. And as you're, I know, very aware, the mayor and city council has made Central Avenue one of their 10 top priorities. And so, we've been partnering with Dubuque Initiatives on several projects of redevelopment down on the Central Avenue corridor. And we think because of those initiatives and the redevelopment of several properties already, that Dubuque Initiatives, while they don't actually do the redevelopment, they do partner with private developers, right now mostly Chris Richards, but there are others that are coming forward now. But we're seeing people like Chris Miller step up on their own and buy properties down there and redevelop them. So, we think it's what we would hope was going to happen when the mayor and council made it a priority, and Dubuque Initiatives made it a priority, that it would just spur other investors to come down into the corridor, and that's exactly what's happening.
Thank you for that, Ms. Connors. I know you're on the Dubuque Initiatives Board, and their, their area that they're going to help us with is from this, is it from 1,300 out to 2,200 Central, or what's our zone?
Yeah, the corridor is considered as 11th Street to 22nd Street. So, this falls within that area.
Right, and we're gonna, we're gonna have it all done in a three years, five years?
Hope so. Yep.
That sounds good.
Sure.
All right.
That's what I thought when I started this job. It goes quick. Well, it doesn't.
I know there's a lot of work that goes on, so thank you for all your help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Any other thoughts on this one? Well, I, I'll just say, I'll repeat a thank you. I think it's really important that we, you know, the reason this housing initiative that is going on and all the housing that's being built is working so well in Dubuque is because it's a team effort. It's not just the city standing here doing something. It's not just Dubuque Initiative doing something. It's not just private developers that are doing something. It's everybody working together to get it done. One of the things that I've learned in my brief time in, in this role is that this is really difficult work. The building housing is not easy to do. It's very expensive. It involves a lot of moving parts. The disappointment of not being able to go forward with the, the former tax credits that somebody was reaching for to try and make this project work a year or two ago was one of those challenges, but now we start to see somebody stepping back in. And I also find it interesting that sometimes what goes around comes around. What was the old Walsh store and then became a beautiful building and a great addition when Heartland Financial took over and was able to, to work with that, is now potentially going to become ground-level commercial space once again, with, with residential space up above, in a really good spot in the city of Dubuque. I think it's a great place for all that. So, I'm, I'm very appreciative for, of this work and very glad that we've been able to agree on a development agreement that we can move forward, and looking forward to voting for it. All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number three is 2025 Pavement Marking Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council approve the planned specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $229,200 for the 2025 pavement marking project through the adoption of the attached resolution. The pavement marking project is completed annually due to a more rapid deterioration on higher volume, higher vehicular movement roadways. Pavement markings are applied using waterborne paint with a service life of approximately two years. As part of a cooperative maintenance agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation, the city will include portions of Iowa DOT jurisdictional pavement markings with the city's annual pavement marking program. The maintenance agreement includes all symbols and legends and a portion of center lines on Iowa DOT routes within the city. The Iowa DOT will reimburse the city for their share of project cost after the project is completed and accepted. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approve the planned specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2025 pavement marking project. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? Somebody wants to talk about pavement markings, huh? All right. Adrian?
Nope.
Okay, back to the table then for any discussion? I have one quick question, and Gus, this is probably going to be for you, just to warn you since you're sitting in back. I know we talked a little bit during your engineering presentation with the budget presentation about the remarking of Central and White Street and what that might end up looking like and when we were going to be doing that. And I just want to make sure people know, is this a part of that, or is that something that's kind of separate that we're looking at a little bit differently?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll save Gus walking up to the thing because I asked-
After he's halfway here already.
I asked him that today, and the answer is that that will be part of next year's the goal is to have a part of next year's pavement marking process.
Got it. So, we won't be expecting major changes in the markings on Central and White in this-
In 2025, no.
In 2025, okay. All right, that's good to know. Thank you, Gus, and thank you, Mike. Okay, no further comments on this. The motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. So, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number four is Fire Headquarters HVAC Replacement Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Would you receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution?
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Fire Chief Amy Scheller and Project Manager Jim Bosley are recommending city council approve the planned specifications, form of contract, estimated cost of $650,000 for the 2025 repair and maintenance of the Fire Headquarters HVAC Replacement Project through the adoption of the attached resolution. Fire Headquarters HVAC Replacement Project will provide for the replacement of the existing boiler system that is original to the building when it was constructed in 1970. The project will remove the existing boiler and replace it with eight commercial forced air units that will supply heating and cooling to the different zones within the building. Using the forced air units will provide consistent temperature control within each zone. The system will be less expensive to install and operate more efficiently than a new boiler. In the garage area where the fire and rescue vehicles are parked, two smaller boilers will provide the necessary heat for that area. There will also be upgrades to the duct system in the building and new controls that will operate, operate the system. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider that the city council approve the planned specification form of contract for the 2025 repair and maintenance of the Fire Headquarters HVAC Replacement Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here.
No one virtually.
Virtually. Back to us for any discussion then. Anyone? All right. I'm pretty confident that I can speak for the council, that we're excited to see this one moving forward. We've been talking about this project for a while. Glad that we were able to work out some sort of a project where everything can fit and still be much more efficient than what we're using right now and much more comfortable for the firefighters who live in there. So, glad that we can move this forward today. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is proceedings to hold public hearing for the issuance of not-to-exceed $761,000 Stormwater Revenue Loan and Disbursement Agreement, Sponsorship Project Amendment, 2024 Green Alley Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending city council approval of the suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of not-to-exceed $761,000 Stormwater Revenue Loan and Disbursement Agreement, Sponsorship Project Amendment, Green Alley. The Upper B Branch Stormwater Management Utility Revenue Capital Loan Note, Series 2019, dated April 12, 2019, will also be amended by decreasing the interest rate to fund the 2024 Green Alley Sponsorship Project, the proceeds of which will be used to pay construction costs for the reconstruction of three alleys in the downtown area. These alleys include the reconstruction of the alleys and two of those between Iowa Street and Central Avenue from 15th to 17th Street. The third alley will be reconstructed between Central Avenue and White Street from 17th to 18th Streets. The project will include replacement of water and sewer utilities in the corridor, including replacing private services for water and sewer. The private water services that are led will be replaced from the main to the buildings. The city of Dubuque was approved for partial funding for this project through the Clean Water SRF Sponsorship Project Program. The SRF Sponsorship Project is related to the Upper B Branch Stormwater SRF Loan and will provide $761,000 needed to construct the improvements associated with the three alleys in the downtown area. The funding of the $761,000 in improvements will come from interest payments of the city's Upper B Branch Stormwater Loan, which will be returned to the city to fund the 2024 Green Alley Project. In 2009, legislation was passed in Iowa that allows water utilities that issue debt through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program to sponsor and help finance other water quality improvement projects within or outside its service limits. This new funding mechanism, called Water Resource Restoration Sponsored Projects, provides cities, counties, local watershed organizations, watershed management authorities, county conservation boards, and soil and water conservation districts a funding source to construct improvements throughout a watershed that keeps sediment, nutrients, chemicals, and other pollutants out of streams and lakes. Repayment of a standard clean water SRF loan includes repayment of the original loan amount, the principal, and the cost to finance the loan, interest, and fees. On a clean water SRF loan with a sponsored project like this one, the financing costs are reduced by the amount of the cost-sponsored project improvements. So, we have a, an illustration here that shows a comparison between a standard SRF loan and a SRF loan with a sponsorship project. And as shown, the total cost of the utility, the total of the loan repayments, remains unchanged as the cost of the funding of the sponsorship project is offset by reduction in loan financing costs. In essence, two water quality projects are completed for the price of one. The state of Iowa has now discontinued the sponsorship project option for future debt issuances. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approval of a suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of not, not-to-exceed $761,000 Stormwater Revenue Loan and Disbursement Agreement. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one.
Nope.
Nothing virtually. Back to us for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank first.
I know that these property owners on Central Avenue and White are very appreciative of this because this is something that they've been wanting. Those alleys are in poor condition. They know that they have to front some of the bill, but appreciate that. Hopefully, this gets approved so we can keep making the neighborhood look nice.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Van Milligan. So, you talked about the SRF, part of the program is going to be discontinued after this year. Does the state of Iowa have to approve SRF funding every year, or is this an ongoing program of a five-year program or 10, or could you tell us more about that? Because this and other items here really heavily relies on this FRF program.
Yes, and so, I, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding. The SRF Low Interest Loan Program is continuing. It's the idea that a city can take the interest payments that they make to the state for their SRF loan, and instead of using it to pay the interest, use it to fund another project. So, that was a new program the state initiated, and I'm going to use round numbers like eight or 10 years ago. After they created that program where you could use the interest from your loan payments to the state to actually fund another project, for three years, they never got an application, a successful application. So, Dubuque was the first one to ever have a successful application. That was like five, six years ago. Since then, other cities have modeled our application and have, have had successful applications. We've had several, including this one. So, the beauty of it is you get a low-interest loan to fund one water project, and even though you're only paying low interest, you get to use that interest payment to actually fund a different project. So, really, it's zero interest that gets paid to the state. So, the low-interest loan component, the SRF loan component, will continue. So, we will continue for our sanitary sewer and water projects to get low-interest loans[1733.16] through the state to fund the projects. What we won't get anymore is the ability to use our own interest payments to fund another local project that they have discontinued.
Thank you. I guess, and what about the core SRF? Is it brought up every year?
Yes, okay. So I'm sorry, I didn't finish answering your question.
Well, I interrupted you, so sorry.
So that program is actually funded by the federal government, so the money for that program comes from the federal government to the state, and then the state disperses it through loans throughout the state. And we have every indication that that will continue. Now certainly could any federal budget year, they say we're done doing that? I've not even heard a rumor of that being the case. I think it's been a program and it's been in place for decades and decades. It's been very successful in helping cities and counties maintain their water and sanitary sewer infrastructure, and I haven't heard any hint that it might go away.
Okay, and if it does, we'll react then?
Well, if it did, the position the city would then be in is we'd have to go into what's called general obligation debt issuances, which is still a low interest rate because they're tax-exempt issuances, so that the borrowers, I'm sorry, the lenders can offer you a lower interest rate because there's no taxes charged on there. But it still would be a higher rate than the low-interest SRF loan program. So I'm kind of guessing, I'd say it'd be like between 2% for the SRF and 3.5% for GO bonds. I don't know if Jennifer Larson is here. I don't think she is. Oh, yeah, oh, she is. She would know those percent numbers better than I would.
Good evening. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson. So the state revolving fund loans are now variable loans, and most recent quarter, they're at 2.84% for a 20-year SRF loan. Our recent bond sale, non, or sorry, tax-exempt was between, I'd say like 4.5%, 4.7% interest rate.
Thank you. And the GO bond, if we had to do that, of course, goes against, is calculated, part of the calculation by Moody's, right? So that, it would have an effect on us, but we can, we could still do the project, is what you're saying.
So the component of general obligation for part of the process to issue those is we have to be rated by Moody's Investor Service to get a rating on the bonds to go to market. State revolving fund loans, we do not have the cost of doing that, so we don't have to be rated to issue those. So the actual issuance cost of state SRF loans is much lower, not having that cost. Same with less bond counsel time and financial advisor time, so less issuance fees, but we would still be able to issue general obligation bonds.
One other attractive feature is SRF loans are don't count against your statutory debt limit. Is that correct?
If SRF loans are issued as revenue bonds, they do not count against your statutory debt limit. There is the option to issue them as general obligation. We do have one stormwater issuance that is GO, not appropriation.
Well, thank you for all the good information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Public hearing number six is proceedings for public hearing for the issuance of not to exceed $1,600,000 stormwater revenue capital loan notes, state revolving loan fund program, B Branch Gate and Pump Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Resnick.
Motion by Sprank, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending City Council approval of the suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $1.6 million of stormwater revenue capital loan notes, state revolving loan fund program, the proceeds of which will be used to fund the B Branch Gate and Pump Project. The proposed Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation, or the 16th Street Detention Basin Project, involves construction of a new pump station, includes the following elements: new floodgates, replacement of the two existing flood pumps with four new pumps, replacement and updating of the electrical service to current standards, and installation of a backup generator for the additional pumps to address the needed resiliency being demanded by the storms of recent years. The new floodgates will be constructed on the basin side of the levee on the west side of Kerper Boulevard, across the street from the existing pump station, which allows for the pumps to operate more efficiently, eliminates the environmental concerns on the river side of the levee, and allows for operation of the existing facility to maintain flood protection during construction of the new facility. Instead of utilizing the two existing 90,000 gallon per minute pumps that are more than 50 years old, the new facility will have four 90,000 gallon per minute pumps. This allows for redundancy in event of a pump failure. In concert with the B Branch Creek Restoration Project, including the B Branch Railroad Culverts component of the project, the proposed project improvements will provide a system that can accommodate the flooding that occurred between 1999 and 2011, flooding that resulted in six presidential disaster declarations due to public and private property damage, flooding that has impacted more than 1,300 homes and businesses. It also provides for additional resiliency options as rainstorms increase in both depth and intensity. The state revolving fund loan will have a variable interest rate of 2.84% plus a servicing fee of 0.25%, a 20-year term, and will be abated from the stormwater fund. The proceedings have been prepared to show as a first step the receipt of any oral or written objections from any resident or property owner to the proposed action of the council to authorize the form of loan and dispersment agreement and issue the notes to the Iowa Finance Authority. A summary of objections received or made, if any, should be attached to the proceedings. After all objections have been received and considered, the City Council decides to enter into the agreement and issue the notes. A form of resolution follows that should be introduced and adopted entitled "Resolution Taking Additional Action on Proposal to Enter Into a Stormwater Revenue Loan and Dispersment Agreement." In the event the City Council decides to abandon the proposal, then the form of resolution included in said proceeding should not be adopted. In this event, a motion merely be adopted to the effect that such proposal is abandoned. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We're in a public hearing to consider City Council approval of the suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of stormwater revenue capital loan notes, state revolving loan fund program, the proceeds of which will be used to fund the B Branch Gate and Pump Project. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? Seeing no one here.
No input.
Nothing virtually. Back to the table. I'll just add, it was really exciting to kick this project off officially last week. This is, this one was, and I said at the time, it was a long time coming, but it really has been. There's been some delays, it's been challenging, doing it despite all the challenges of increased costs of pretty much everything that it takes to build anything. So this is wonderful to be, seeing this moving forward. This is a really important part of the B Branch Flood Mitigation Program. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Public hearing number seven is proceedings for public hearing for the issuance of not to exceed $2 million water revenue capital loan notes, state revolving loan fund program, private-led service line replacement pilot program phase one.
Mr. Mayor.
Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending City Council approval of the suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $2 million in water revenue capital loan notes for state revolving loan fund program for the private-led service line replacement pilot program phase one. The city Dubuque is taking part in a unique opportunity to assist approximately 585 homes in three phases, owner occupied or rented, within the city with a functional replacement of private lead water service lines by trenching or pull-through methods to prevent the potential for drinking water contamination at a house-by-house level. This phase of the pilot program is 100% voluntary, is open to those residents with a verified drinking water lead service line meeting the socio-economic guidelines established by the bipartisan infrastructure law. The scope of work in the first phase includes the replacement of approximately 200 lead service lines identified through the city's water distribution service area. The nature of the replacements will vary by site, ranging from full replacements, public water main to the interior plumbing, to partial replacements, a portion of the service line between the public water main and the interior plumbing. Work will be conducted within the city's right-of-way and on private properties with authorization from the property owners. The city is moving forward with this unique opportunity and has secured a level of BIL funding to conduct the first of its kind in the community, lead service line replacement program. The BIL funds are being administered locally through the Iowa Department of Natural Resources' State Revolving Fund, or Iowa SRF program, with 49% of construction costs being forgivable. The state revolving fund loan will have an interest rate of 2.84%, maturity date of June 1, 2045, and will be abated from the water fund. The proceedings have been prepared to show as a first step the receipt of any oral or written objectives from any resident or property owner to the proposed action of the City Council to authorize the form of loan and dispersment agreement and issue the notes to the Iowa Finance Authority. A summary of objections received or made, if any, should be attached to the proceedings. After all objections have been received and considered, the City Council decides to enter into the agreement and issue the notes, a form of resolution follows that should be introduced and adopted entitled "Resolution Taking Additional Action on Proposal to Enter Into a Water Revenue Loan and Dispersment Agreement." In the event the City Council decides to abandon the proposal, then the form of resolution included in said proceeding should not be adopted. In this event, a motion merely be adopted to the effect that such proposal is abandoned. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We're in a public hearing to consider City Council approval of the suggested proceedings for a public hearing on the issuance of water revenue capital loan notes for private-led service line replacement pilot program. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here.
Nope.
Nothing virtually. Back to us then for any discussion. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you. I'm excited that this is moving forward because this will definitely be helping so many of my neighbors, so hopefully it gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Van Milligan. You mentioned 585 homes. It's only homes, right? No businesses are involved in this program?
Well, it's owner-occupied and rental homes, so some people consider rental homes as being a business, but no, not any businesses, commercial businesses.
I see, thank you. And so we're going to have good sequencing and workflow to best accommodate the neighborhoods, right, including the traffic? And are they planned, do they plan to do this in bunches and regularly contact other members of the neighborhood? I guess that's the only notes that I hear from people, that sometimes these great projects bring a lot of disruption to the neighborhood, and it doesn't seem like there's any kind of rhyme or reason to the citizens necessarily. So has that been acknowledged, and is this being accomplished?
Yeah, I think generally, these are dispersed throughout the neighborhood, so it's not, I don't think it's like a street project where you close a street down for a summer and everybody on that block is convenient, so probably most people hardly notice, they'll see, you know, two trucks out in front of a house and maybe an excavator, and maybe not, because some of it's not going to be excavated, it's just going to be driven through, you know, pushed through the ground.
Sure.
But I don't know, Chris Lester, are you on the line? Okay, I was going to see if Chris had any more information than that, the water department manager, but I think that really is pretty much the response. There may be certain neighborhoods, like on a block, there'd be more than one or two houses, but I think that's going to be the exception.
Okay, it just seemed like 585 is a lot, you know, a lot of work going on.
Well, remember, it's over three, it's over three years.
Still, even if it's 200 a year, that's a lot of work. So, I mean, and a lot of disruption if it weren't thought through. And I'm just, I'm just asking if they considered that, or is it a first come?
I believe they have, and I'm confident as we work with the contractor, we'll be able to minimize the inconvenience to people in the neighborhood. But there will be some inconvenience, there's no doubt about that, because there'll be parking taken off of, you know, certain sections as, you know, the trucks arrive to do the project and things like that, but they should, it should go pretty darn quick.
Great, as long as, and I'm sure Mr. Lester has thought about this, as long as that's part of the plan to really consider that, the neighborhood effect.
Well, we'll certainly ensure that it is.
Sure, great. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, waterline replacement typically is a two-day project that's mostly to allow the pavement repair to heal and cure. You do have to open the pavement to get to the main to attach, whether you board or lay it, so it'll require street excavations in front of every address most likely, but the work moves along fairly quickly.
Mr. Sprank.
To echo off both of the, both of my cohorts is, I've seen folks who've had water mains burst, and they haven't, they don't have water for up to a week. So I think a two-to-three day disruption is not, is better than having a week or longer, so.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, we'd invite any public input this evening. As you come up, just a reminder to have your name and address for the record, and if we could try to keep those comments to about five minutes, we'd appreciate that.
Mary Claus, 1605 Lincoln Avenue. Please follow the recommendation of the city's Parks and Recreation Commission and vote no to allowing pets in Eagle Point Park. Allowing animals in Eagle Point Park will drastically alter the character and environment of these public spaces. Children and adults should be free to roam and explore these parks without concern that they will encounter others' pets and waste. Although the ordinance may impose regulations and fines, the reality is that there will be unleashed animals, uncollected waste, and the inevitable animal bites. Even if an owner follows the regulations, barking dogs create a noisy, chaotic, and potentially frightening environment that diminishes others' enjoyment of these public spaces and can further disrupt natural wildlife, including bird species. As a lifelong Point resident, I am deeply concerned that allowing pets will forever alter the peaceful nature of Eagle Point Park. Many of our fondest family memories include the park. Visits to the park calmed my late sister as she endured the final stages of dementia. A small minority of vocal pet owners has persisted in this pursuit. I love animals and have owned many throughout my lifetime. I never once felt I had the right to bring my pets with me wherever I pleased. There is a time and a place for all things. In this case, simply increase the city space allocated for pet parks. That way, all who choose to gather in those spaces in the presence of pets voluntarily accept the resulting environment. Please vote no this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, for your comments.
Hello, everyone. Jenna Hertz, the executive director here at the Dubuque Arboretum and Botanical Gardens, address 3800 Arboretum Drive. So I am also talking this evening about pets and parks. I understand that the Dubuque Arboretum, also known as Marshall Park, is not being one of the parks being considered in this change. However, I would still like to raise a few important points, as others have done, upon your consideration of this important topic. So the negative impact on special events. As many of you know, we do lots of beautiful, amazing events at our organization, no different than what the two parks that you guys are considering tonight do as well. At our organization, we do concerts, weddings, special community moments, including pets in an open-entry basis would fundamentally alter the experience we offer, no different than those locations you're considering too. Guests may no longer feel comfortable enjoying the grounds due to positive, to potentially negative interactions between pets and people, the risk of negative interactions between pets and people, the risk of uncollected waste, and noise disruptions caused due to barking. For example, imagine our concerts that we held last night, Music in the Gardens. We brought in over 1,000 attendees. Imagine if everyone brought their pets. It sounds like fun, but in reality, it would not have been a fun experience for our guest attendees. Kids getting up to dance in the grass, barefoot, connecting with nature, who knows what they may have stepped in. Also, when looking at the pets, they love enjoying, interacting with one another, however, that can lead to barking, running towards one another, et cetera, which would have led to our guests having a very negative experience at that occasion. Also, think of everyone that comes out for that concert. They're laying blankets in the grass, setting their personal belongings in the grass as well, whether that's their blankets, their picnic baskets, their food, even to their chairs, their shoes, everything gets in contact with some potential waste. From there, that's another example of how that would provide a very negative interaction for those special events similar to what you have at Eagle Point Park and the other parks. Financial and operational concerns. Has the city considered the potential financial and operational impact this policy will have in your organization? You already are providing pet waste bags, and that is already something that's coming out of taxpayer funding. But what about the additional strain that can cause on a limited park staff already that are currently somewhat stretched thin to provide for the day-to-day occasional repairs and things and such that go on up there? Now they're going to have to divert more of their time to the critical responsibilities to maintain pet-related issues. Moreover, the city depends on rental income from its park facilities to fund its daily operations. Revenue could potentially decline if people are less inclined to rent facilities from the parks where pets are present. For example, one of our wedding venues is adjacent to the residential community, the neighborhoods that border our property line. When showing one of our wedding guests that potential rental space, one of the neighbor's dogs was barking in the area when they were looking at that venue spot, and as a result, they decided not to have their wedding at our organization. So that's something you guys are going to have to consider as well, because you guys rely on that rental income to fund your operations. Looking ahead, since the city is undergoing a master planning process, maybe it would be more prudent to hold off on this decision until that process is complete. Maybe those designers have some great ideas that can bring some insight on this, on this recommendation to have pets in parks such as Eagle Point Park. This will give everyone the more opportunity to make informed recommendations that result in solutions that we can all feel good about at the end of the day. We want to create spaces that are safe, not only for, that are safe, welcoming, and thoughtfully designed for both people and pets. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna, for your comments.
Good evening, everyone. Art Galoon, 535 Heritage Drive. Thanks for all your work on this. This has been a labor of love by the council on the Park and Rec Commission for a long time. You've had hundreds of pages to look at, so I'm going to cover anything, and I'm going to try not to cover anything the previous speaker said. I would review, though, back in 2019, I'm looking at the Better Cities for Pets Assessment, City of Dubuque, this is from August of 2019, and we have 16.93 miles where you can take your dog and walk your dog and have your dog, AY McDonald, Bee Branch, Granger Creek, Heritage Trail, JC Trail, Bergfell Recreation, Miller River View Park, North West Arterio, Port of Dubuque, Power Line Trail, Southern Levy Trail. In addition, we have 111.27 acres of green, public greenway spaces, which you know, the Bee Branch, Rockdale Grand View, Medical Associates, Center Grove, and of that, 111.27 acres, and 97, almost 100 acres of that are available for people to take their pets. I happened to be at the Arboretum concert last night, and I was struck by the same things Ms. Hertz talked about. There had to be 1,000 people there, because you only had 500 cupcakes that my neighbors had provided, and those were gone in about five minutes. But it did strike me, the food was behind, the concert was on the grass, the food was behind, and people felt very free to send their children around the corner to get something to eat and come back. So they're in the grass, everybody's in the grass, we're on a lawn chair. That freedom won't exist at our jewels, which are Eagle Point, Marshall, the Arboretum, and Murphy Park, if you change that. So I'd offer those things initially for consideration. In addition, as I've said before, places that have people come to them for tourism and to live, take Chicago and Miami. We have some family in Chicago, so we get over there quite a bit. Grant Park allows dogs. Right next door is Millennium Park. They don't. And everybody accepts it, and they understand why. Millennium Park's a jewel. You've been there with the bean and the waterfall and concerts and things. Miami Beach, the same way. I took a picture this year of Miami Beach, no dogs allowed, and that's their jewel. That's why everyone comes. And maybe to connect another dot, I heard tonight about how we're building all these units, and I thought I heard, if I did the math right, we've had 6,000 people move here between 2014 and 2024, hundreds and hundreds of people are coming to Dubuque and Dubuque County. And you know that, because we're going to build for them, and Chris Miller's going to build for them. We have apartments going up all over. They're coming, and they're not staying away because we preserved Marshall and the Arboretum and Grand View and Murphy and Eagle Point. They're not staying away because we protect four jewels. So I'd offer that for consideration, too. In September, when you gave the charge to the Park and Rec Commission to study this again, I went to every meeting. They worked hard. They worked really hard, and they took a lot of public input. One of the commissioners at the meeting that they were voting on said, you know, we've solicited public comment numerous times. Every time we solicited it, the people who didn't want to change the ordinance outnumbered the people who did. All of them very well-intentioned, all of them very well-spoken. And on the commission, there were people, particularly our chair, the chairwoman, Jennifer Tigges, back in 2012, and this kind of all started, Jennifer wasn't on the commission. And she was very much, I don't mean to speak for her, but I observed this, these were my observations. Every meeting, she was very fair, all the input, and quite frankly, I think she preferred to change it. In the end, though, when one of the commissioners said, you know, all her input, the majority have been against a change. And then the commission did something that I'd recommend you do tonight. They had researched it, they had discussed it, they roundtabled it, listened to each other's point of view, and then one of the commissioners said, well, we got to do something here, so let's move, and let's not change it. And there were people on that commission that wanted to change it, and they deferred and wanted to give you a unanimous recommendation. That's a big deal. It's a big deal. And I know all of you have your particular point of view, so I'd offer for your consideration that if you're thinking that you want to change the ordinance, think of what they did, because they, they took your charge seriously, and they worked really hard. And so you're not going to be rubber-stamping anything, you're going to be realizing, accepting the research, and then confirming what they did. And it's good for Dubuque. We have these jewels. I went up to the Arboretum again, because I'd found something that someone had lost, I need to take it up there, and I was struck again by what I observed last night with my family, and then I decided to go to Eagle Point to get my pass, and I drove up through Eagle Point, and there was nobody there, it was a Monday. So there was probably a dozen people in the park in addition to workers. But I was struck by the fact that off to the right is to drive up by the telescopes, there were three people just down on a blanket with picnic tables all around them, and they're just on a blanket, on the grass, with no worries. It's kind of, it's kind of amazing. And then I went down to Grand View Park and saw the same thing. And I, I think when you think about it, if we protect these three or four places, there's nothing wrong with that. It's okay. People are going to come. We're an all-American city, since we started talking about this in 2012 and over and over again, we're still an all-American city. We're a great city. We're a great city. People are going to come. And I think when they come and they see what kind of people we have here in the parks we have and what we protect, they're going to, they're going to cherish it, and they're going to advertise it, and we'll have more people come. So I urge you tonight to not change the ordinance, protect what we have, and think of it that way. We're protecting just a little piece of that, just a little piece of that, and, and it'll all be okay. So thank you.
Thank you, Art, for your comments.
Good evening. Joan Dahlquist, 790 Caledonia, and thank you for the opportunity for all of us to speak tonight. There's really nothing more that I can say after the three excellent speakers before me, but just to say that I, too, am not in favor of having dogs allowed in Eagle Point Park, specifically Eagle Point Park. And again, there's really nothing new I can say about safety cleanliness. You've heard all of the issues. I agree with everything. And I, I respect the Park and Recreation Commission for all of their hard work. I was at one of the meetings, I sent comments at a later time, and I know they listened to hundreds of responses, had their own multiple discussions. They voted unanimously to keep the ordinance as is, and I ask everyone else to respect that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan, for your comments.
William Meyer, 1856 Ronberg, and I, too, am concerned about pets in the parks. I think we have, a majority of the pet owners are very responsible people, but we have a small percentage that isn't, and I've actually had altercations with them, and I explained to them, we have bags right here, use them, and they're like, if you're so effing worried about it, then you pick it up. And I think as long as we have a few parks, like say Eagle Point Park or whatever, that are protected, we should try to keep those while we can, because obviously Eagle Point Park has enough of their own issues to worry about. They, they don't have the staff or the resources to do any more than what they already are tasked with doing. So I just wanted to make my voice heard that I am opposed to increasing pets in more parks. I'm not opposed to pets, but I think there are enough places. Thank you.
Thank you, William, for your comments. Any others this evening? Seeing nobody here, anything else virtually?
Do have some written input submitted for action item number one from Nicole Gantz, Luanne Lacant of 9698 Route 52 South, John and Nancy Ferry of 3235 Baldwin Drive, and Art Galoon of 535 Heritage Drive.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, last call. Okay, we can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is Park and Recreation Advisory Commission Recommendation on City Code 10-5B-4 Dogs and Cats.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move that the council sustain the recommendation of the Park and Rec Commission and leave the ordinance as is.
Second?
We got a motion by Jones and a second by Rucel to sustain the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission on this particular ordinance. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Farber?
Could I ask legal counsel what that means?
To sustain means to uphold or to accept their recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Well, let's, I think we need to go to Mike first, do you have a memo for us, Mike? Yeah, please.
Thank you. In September of 2024, the city council requested the Park and Recreation Commission review the current ordinance related to pets in parks. The discussion included whether dogs should be allowed in the remainder of the parks that currently do not allow them by the city's current ordinance. Some city council members referred specifically to Murphy and Eagle Point Parks, where dogs and cats are allowed only if they remain in the vehicle at all times. Additional information was requested, including data for fines, empowerment and enforcement, and pet waste station data. Parks and Recreation Director Marie Ware is providing the background information and documents provided to the Parks and Rec Commission and related history regarding the city council's request to the Park and Rec Commission to review the code section. The recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission is provided as part of this agenda packet.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I'm one of the people that felt very strongly that pets should be allowed in, in all but Marshall Park and the Arboretum for many years, and from a lot of public input. I don't think it's a small vocal group, I think it's a very large vocal group that supports pets being allowed in parks. And I've been all over the place since, since this came back to us with the unanimous recommendation that I very much respect and don't want to upset from the commission that I also respect and admire. When I say I've been all over the place, this is a computer work I did earlier today, cut Eagle Point Park in half, making a pet-free area and a, and a pet-approved area that I don't feel strongly about anymore. I, I think when we do this, we need to do much better with our signage, we need large signs that tell the whole story. In fact, I've drawn one up here that says, sorry, but there are no pets allowed in Eagle Point, Murphy, or Marshall Parks. Your licensed, leashed, and vaccinated pets are welcome in our many other parks. So the people driving to Eagle Point with a dog in the car that didn't know, know that they got to turn around and go someplace else, but that there's many places where they can turn around and be welcome. So what, what tipped this, this old, hard guy to the, to the dark side, or to the, to the, what I think will be the prevailing side tonight? This kid named Joshua that I don't know, but I know his mom, and we served together on the DRA board, he's autistic with Down's system, and he is scared, deathly afraid of dogs. And he's 70 pounds, she can't pick him up and whisk him away when a dog turns up somewhere that, that they are. And Joshua's right to enjoy the park, I think is more important than my right to take my dog to the park. When I have the opportunity to go to many other parks, and Joshua should have an opportunity to go to Eagle Point, or Murphy, or the Arboretum, and not have one of his worst life spheres realized. And she's got a lot to work on with Joshua. You could probably work with him and get him to like your dog, but it's not going to be one or two or three visits, it's going to take a lot of work. But she's got a lot of other life management issues with him to, to manage, and dogs is pretty low on her list. So I, I get that, I've got to respect that, and, and I've got a lifetime of advocacy for people with challenges, intellectual disabilities, with my work at Hills and Dales and Special Olympics, that's a big deal for me. So I, I think the right thing to do is to respect our commission and do a better job with signage and telling the story. While I'm talking, we can do a better job with our little gate operator at Eagle Point. We can make that a tourist information center, it already kind of is. We can add some resources to that and, and make the person working in there more comfortable with dealing with people that it has to tell no to, and we can have, you know, we could pass out a handout, say, hey, all these city parks here, you're welcome to take your pet and have a good time, we'd love to see you there. With a small sign that you see too late coming into Eagle Point, it's just, just not a good deal, and puts that gate attendant in a bad light to start with, so. There's a lot of things we could do to make that a really attractive stop on the way into the park that'll get you to other places in the city. We can partner with Travel Dubuque and load it up with brochures and pamphlets of all the attractions in Dubuque and do a lot of good things for the park, and we're headed that way. So I appreciate the public input, the voluminous public input on this over the years we've been talking about it. When we passed, made the ordinance changes some years ago to allow parks in the other parks, we said we'd revisit it once we had some data and what's going on in those parks. When we learned that, that there weren't any bad incidents of any significance, that there were only a couple of violations written, that most people changed their behavior when they were informed of the rules, we thought, let's, let's take another look at it, let's ask Park and Rec to do, do their due diligence first and bring it back here. Well, they did, as Mr. Galoon said, they, they did a good job of it, they really dug into it, spent a lot of time and work on it. So I, I have to stand with them tonight, I have to stand with Joshua tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Rucel?
Thank you. I have a couple of comments that I wanted to share, and first of all, I'm always really pleased when there's so much public input and plenty of associated data, and so much thanks to our park commission and the park department for getting that all to us. What I, what I saw was that many pet owners are responsible. Generally, they utilize the approved areas and pick up after their pets, but I know from the feedback that it's about more than just pet waste and leashes. There are allergies, fears, and some residents just want people-only places, especially those really, as Mr. Galoon said, the gems in our community. And so when you live in a community, I think it's important to listen to all voices and try and seek common ground, which is what we do, I think, very well at this table. Some of the, the research showed that there are other communities that allow parks, dogs or pets in all their parks, but I'm listening to what our residents are telling us. And when this first came up, I wasn't a pet owner, but now I have two dogs. Do I wish I could take them with me everywhere? Of course I do, but I understand this is a community-wide solution, and I think that we can still be a pet-friendly community by, as Mr. Jones said, focusing on the many places that we can take our pets. I walk my dogs almost every day, and I never run out of places where I can, where we can go together. So based on all the facts, the feedback from the commission, the resident input, I think that the current ordinance provides a good balance and a common sense approach to pets in parks. It provides plenty of places for us to enjoy the outdoors. It provides plenty of places for us to enjoy the outdoors with our pets and safe places that are just for people. So I'm going to be in support of the commission recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was discussed in 2019, where, when I first came onto council, and I agreed with all the parks except for the four that we said to be, that we said no to then because they were jewels, they're beautiful parks, leave them alone. And then when this came back up, I was like, I'm still in support of that same idea. And then when I reread all the lovely, the 60-some pages of comments from folks that were for or against, and I specifically focused on the ones that would affect the jewel of the neighborhood in my ward of Eagle Point Park, a lot of the answers were no. And so I'm still gonna, I agree with a lot of my neighbors, even the ones that have reached out to me these last few days, that don't agree with it. I'm okay with leaving the ordinance as is. I think it's a very happy medium, and it kind of strikes a fine balance for folks that want to have a space where they, where there's no pets and folks that, like we said, there's plenty of other parks that we can go to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farber.
So I want to thank my colleagues here at the table for providing me the most beautiful entree to this discussion that I can think of, because I am the only one here that actually has a commercial establishment named after a dog. And not only do we have the logo of the dog, we actually have our car licenses after the name of our dog. So as you can appreciate, we are very much family-focused on our pets. But that being said, I realize that this is a balancing act that we're trying to discuss tonight, and I can't express enough and give a shout out to all of those individuals that sent all of those emails, and also to the commission for their work, for their very, very thorough work, and for the five of you here tonight, and Art in particular, for your articulation of the main points. And I think really, basically talks about the pros and the cons in a very elegant fashion. So I very much thank you for bringing that to our attention in such a gracious and polite way of this discussion. The only major point I would like to make that's a little different is that I think that for Eagle Point Park in particular, we are very challenged with that upkeep. We are challenged with the maintenance. We are in the process of an opportunity to basically have historic preservation to some of those Caldwell pavilions. And with all of that going on, we still have some huge concerns about the upkeep of that park. And so I think it's just not a good timing to bring an additional feature for that park in particular. I do believe that we have an enormous amount of trails and miles of green spaces, Art had said, for our pets, and that for young professionals, when they do want to come to Dubuque and consider Dubuque, I think we owe it to them to do a little bit better marketing on what we can offer for family leisure outdoor activities with pets. And so in addition to some of the signage that I think Mr. Jones had talked about perhaps, and I pulled out from our website tonight that we have information front and center about recreational trails. We could probably change that marketing a touch and say, "Family-focused trails for pets as well," to really establish that we are a very pet-friendly city. And I'm sure there's other ways to creatively address that marketing as well. I think Murphy Park in and of itself is in a residential area, but there is so much walking space around there. You've got Grand View, you have Mines of Spain, and there's just many other places that you can take your dogs for a short walk in that hood, that I do believe that the ordinance as the recommendation from the commission is worth considering tonight. So I just wanted to bring those to our attention, and thank you very much. And thanks again for all the input. It was just outstanding. Appreciate it.
Ms. Wethel.
So Dubuque, boy, when we're passionate, we show up. As everyone's pointed out up here, our ordinance, Pets in Park Packet was 96 pages, and 67 of them were survey results and input with press commentary, and I really appreciated it because that's democracy, folks. I loved it. So thank you to everyone who's here tonight, but also for everyone who has participated actively, even if it was a sentence about what you felt you should have in the survey. Know that I read every sentence. I really appreciated it. I think especially the concerns that people brought related to a history of trauma or fear, that spoke to me, and I respect that. At the end of the day, no one was wrong. Not a single person that provided feedback was wrong. They, each person felt passionately for the reason that was true to them. As an elected official, I think it's important to be transparent about my own personal thoughts when I vote, and I want to share some of that with you tonight. When I was married, at 22, I, my husband and I decided we didn't want to start a family right away, but we got a dog. And that dog went everywhere with us. We lived in Colorado at the time. We hiked the Rockies, we camped, every road trip, every adventure, she was there with us. And she was there for our first two children. Since her passing, we have two more dogs. We're dog people. And so for me personally, dogs are family. The thing about democracy is that I was elected to represent people, not just my own preference. And so in our municipal government, boards and commissions are the eyes and ears of our council. And in this case, they have spent hours in reviewing material and feedback deliberating on this choice. And so for those hours of commitment, they have made a unanimous recommendation of five to zero and to leave the ordinance unchanged. I agree, and I'll support the decision with my own vote tonight. I do want to consider, though, that my hope is that we as a city reflect on a true societal shift, because it is happening. Young professionals are choosing to marry later in life, if they marry at all. They have children later in life, or maybe they don't have children. Some are creating lives with pets as companions on their life journey. Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, Davenport, Sioux City, Iowa City, Ankeny, West Des Moines, Waterloo, Council Bluffs, all allow leashed dogs in all parks and in all trails. I appreciate considerations and feedback provided that in the future, we could include regulations on things like golf courses only during open play, or provide distance provisions on things like ball fields and places like pools built into an ordinance. And so certainly by our decision tonight, I don't rule this out for the long term, but I think it's, I really appreciated some constructive feedback we got from folks who had great ideas. So again, I appreciate everybody's feedback, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Resnick.
Thank you. I would just like to add my voice of appreciation for all the good work and public outreach done by the Park and Rec Advisory Commission. I plan to support their recommendation. The other thing I'd like to comment on, Mr. Jones's suggestion about being proactive and helping people find a place to experience the outdoors with their pets, and AY McDonald specifically is less than a mile away. It's only two minutes away by the car. So if they come to Eagle Point Park, they can, and it's a beautiful park, as I'm sure we all know with the associated trails, that we would automatically say, well, that's a great place, and then, and then, you know, so just offer something specific rather than, oh, but we like dogs and we like, you know, we have a lot of other parks. But maybe something pointed and more focused to help people. And I agree that it would help the gentleman at the gate, who, you know, he's great. I mean, every time I've talked with him, he's very genial, and he knows people love their pets as well. So that's sometimes a tough conversation for some people. But again, I appreciate, you know, there's so much great work done, and our citizens have come here tonight. They've spoken out in many, many ways. I love the comments, both the ones that, you know, I agree with and ones I don't. As Ms. Wethel said, it's important to know what our citizens are thinking. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate all the comments up here, but especially all the comments we heard tonight and throughout this whole process. You know, thank you first and foremost to the Parks and Recreation Commission, all the comments made about how much work this was, absolutely. But I also want to thank everybody who was involved in the discussion. That's what this was. This was a conversation. And I remember when we opened this back up and the discussion happened as a council to say, hey, we should look at this again, which was completely in line with when we passed the last ordinance in 2020. We also said then, we should look at this again, and we have some more data. And the whole point was to just say, let's open it up for conversation again and see what happens. And I think it went really well to be able to do that. I appreciate that people show up so much to talk about these things that they're passionate about, but that also we have data to work with. So I want to talk a little bit about that, because I spent some time today going through some of these data points that we learned about, and I want to make sure we say them out loud, because I think it's important that we talk about this in some ways. I might be off on like one or two, on a couple of numbers here. I hope I counted correctly on everything, but just, trust me that I probably didn't count entirely correctly. But I counted 159 survey responses in the information packet, so 65 people provided written input arguing that we should change the ordinance and actually add Murphy and Eagle Point Park to it. 90 people provided written input arguing against that change. Four people argued in a way that I wasn't entirely clear what they were arguing for. So I'm just going to point that out. Sometimes it was just a little bit of both, but I'm just going to point out that those four also provided some input to us. Dubuque, as mentioned, is the only large city in Iowa that doesn't allow pets in all of its parks. So I want us to recognize, we are an outlier here. We aren't like everybody else in Iowa. We are an outlier in that case. And I also, just on that point, if you go to most other major cities, I know, Art, you pointed out, you know, some examples in Chicago and Miami, but I remember I was in Nashville a couple of years ago, and I swear there were dogs eaten by themselves at the table next to me. I mean, it was like really very pet-friendly in a new kind of way that I hadn't experienced before. And I think that that's the movement that we are seeing. So I want to recognize that, that throughout the country, we're seeing those changes. Dubuque now, we now have 35 pet waste stations throughout the city, which I think is an increase of 10, if I'm not mistaken, from what we were back in, I think, 2020, around the time we were talking about this before. One number I didn't see was the count for dog parks in all these cities. So I just wanted to throw this out there. I might have missed it, but Des Moines has three dog parks, so does Cedar Rapids. Davenport, Sioux City, and Iowa City all have two within their jurisdictions. Keeping in mind, the only one that really matches us as far as population currently is Sioux City in that line. Ankeny, West Des Moines, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, and Ames all have one dog park, just like us, and this is an off-leash dog park. Council Bluffs, this was interesting, doesn't have a dog park. They do a pop-up dog park once a month right now, is what they're doing. The other thing I want to point out is the article that was written, I think it was by Chris Gray at the TH, about the fact that more and more businesses are providing spaces for pets to be a part of the situation there, as long as it's outdoors. So outdoor spaces, obviously pets are still not allowed indoors in spaces in Dubuque. Incidents. I want to talk about the incident data, because this was a huge discussion that we had when we first talked about this in 2020, and the concerns about what might happen and what's going to go on. But in 2020, we had 11 reported incidents, two verbal warnings, no municipal infractions offered, which means nothing rose to that level. 2021, 15 reported, one verbal warning, four general warnings, one written warning, and then in 2021, we did have a municipal infraction. In 2022, there are only four reported incidents in the whole year, zero warnings, zero municipal infractions. In '23, two reported incidents, one verbal warning, zero municipal infractions. 2024, there were 21 reported incidents. Now, 11 of these came from the same address, related to a specific park. It was Moss Park, which I think can happen at times. And there were actually quite a few repeated addresses in all five years, and then so five verbal warnings, and one of those was something related to Moss Park for one municipal infraction. We also had some Parks and Rec logs there. Forty-four times, owners were informed of the ordinance at either Eagle Point or Murphy Park, according to the logs. Nine times, a dog was off-leash in a pet-friendly park, one that is already considered a pet-friendly park. I do think it's important that we point out, there were zero biting incidents reported in any park in the last five years. We had zero. I think that's an important data point that we need to remember as we think about the concerns going forward. Thankfully, pet owners are responsible enough to make sure we didn't have any biting incidents in parks in the last five years. Obviously, another data point is that the Parks and Rec Commission voted to keep this unanimously in this place. So I want to make sure that, this is a really important point, so I want everybody to make sure to hear it. This is not an us-against-them issue here. This is not, this isn't Bears versus Packers. This isn't like, you know, Dog People versus Non-Dog People or Pet People versus Non-Pet People. This, again, was simply a discussion, a conversation among Dubuques. I think we're all in the same place, and one of the parts about living in a city in any society is you kind of have to figure out how to live together. You've got to figure out how to make it work. I don't want anybody to confuse that. It's really important that we talk about that when we're talking about these issues that get emotional, because too often, I think, in today's society, we let emotion lead. For instance, you don't need to use as many exclamation points in your writing when you write to us. I'm still going to listen to you, even if you're not yelling. And I think that's important, because I think if we're going to have a respectful conversation, you can just respectfully write to us and trust that you have elected us to listen to you, and we're going to do that. So as Ms. Wethel said, and I trust it from everybody at this desk, in fact, I think we all read everything. I think we spent our weekend reading everybody's public input, and I appreciate that about this council. But we just need to figure this out together, so we don't need to attack each other or anything like that. In the end, I really do think the compromise that we have in place, that we put in place in 2020, is working really well for our community. I do think that it makes sense to keep things as they are, as the commission has recommended, as everybody here at this table now has said that they would recommend. It does make us an outlier in Iowa, and I don't think that's a terrible thing right now. I think it's where we are. I think that's where we are as a community. I think it's something, I remember when we voted on it in 2020, everybody was a little bit mad, but a little bit okay with it. I remember that, the feel in the room that time. I think we're still in a place now where we're even more comfortable with where we are, because we've been living it, and it's working pretty well. I know some people are not going to be happy to hear that, but I also don't think it's keeping too many people away. I agree that people are still coming here. I agree that people are still enjoying our spaces, and I think they're going to continue to do that. So as our population grows, this gets to Ms. Wethel's point that she just made, as our population does grow, because it's, the trajectory's there, it's happening. And as it does that, and as we build more housing, as we bring more people, I do think we're going to need to continually revisit this issue and talk about it in a different way, depending on where we are. And I hope that everybody's open to that, because I do think there were some pretty good ideas for creative possibilities that some people have mentioned. Mr. Jones worked out a map that might come in handy in, say, three or four more years, you know, for something that might work in Eagle Point Park, for instance. Maybe it would make sense to open Murphy Park. I think these things should be discussion points going forward. But right now, I think we are good where we are. I also think we should continue to talk about another off-leash dog park potentially, if we can afford it, and if it's something that works within our plan. So somebody tonight, and I think it's Jenna, I think it was you, said, we should be looking at the plan that the Parks and Recreation Commission is looking at, the comprehensive plan. Totally agree. I think that's a really good idea, that that plan could be a great starting point for the next level of this discussion. So with that said, and with everybody else's comments here, I really do appreciate this conversation. I think it's been a very good one. So thanks again to everybody. Well, the motion on the table right now is to sustain the decision of the Parks and Recreation Commission to keep the current Dogs and Cats ordinance as is. So with that, Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is Resolutions of Support for Workforce Housing Tax Credit Applications for Housing Developments.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion, Ms. Russell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending approval of the attached resolution supporting the aforementioned applications for the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credits for Housing Development in Dubuque. A community input form also accompanies each resolution and requires signature. When developers submit an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for workforce housing tax credits, they are required to attach both a resolution of support from the municipality and, new this year, a community input form. This allows the municipality to provide insight into the impact each project will have on the city's housing goals. For 440 West Third Street LLC, and that's the developer at, for the project at 440 West Third Street, developers proposing to create six new residential units in a vacant and under-realized building. The site of the first Mercy Hospital in Dubuque has deteriorated and is in need of significant repair. This project will include considerable interior restoration and reconfiguration at an estimated cost of $1,700,000. The project intends to use historic tax credits preserving a historic structure and piece of Dubuque's history. CC15 LLC, doing a project 300 to 320 Cedar Cross Road. The city Dubuque and CC15 LLC have entered into a development agreement for the creation of 180 new of 180 new residential units along Cedar Cross Road. At this time, the developers applying for workforce housing tax credits for Phase 1 of the project, which represents 60 new residential rental units. The anticipated investment for this project is approximately $10,500,000. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Just a quick point of clarification. Ms. Rousell, did I hear you say resolutions plural? Because there are two.
If I, yes, I said resolutions. I will say resolutions.
Resolutions plural for this one. Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I just noticed that as we were going through, and I want to make sure we had that motion. So if we do resolutions, Ms. Wethel, would you second that?
I second.
Yes, okay. All right. Now I believe we are on the right track. Any discussion? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes. My question is, you know, because this resolution of support is required, is requested, well, required, do we analyze each one and score them? Or how is it determined? Because I think there'll be, does everybody get a resolution of support who would like to use this system? Or is, do we weight it in any way that would benefit the city the most? I'm just curious about the process.
Again, Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. We did look through, that was kind of a quandary for us as well, how to approach this. The state was really looking to communities to provide community input, I think to take the pressure off of them somewhat. But it's really a quandary for the city to take a look at all these different projects that are such a variety, and to say, some are more important than others, because that's not true, they're all important. So what we did on those community input forms was we stated either they meet one or two or three of the city council priorities, such as, first of all, simply providing more housing for it being a downtown location, and for it being a historic rehab of an existing structure. So those were the three, and we stated which one or ones that project met.
So every one of these that we recommend, we're just saying, they qualify as an important project.
Yes.
Right. And so we're not trying to pick winners and losers.
Correct.
We're just identifying these winners.
Yes.
And that we'd like them to be, you know, they have our support and like them to be funded.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay. All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolutions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is Pet Licensing System Selection.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and approve the selection.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Farber, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Public Health Director Mary Rose Corrigan is recommending city council approval to proceed with contract discussions and execution of a contract with DocuPet for the pet licensing system. The switch to DocuPet will produce an estimated $35,928 in annual savings, reduce the administrative burden, and offer a more modern and responsive experience for pet owners. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. I think the last thing was what I'm hoping you could comment on, and that is, this is an improvement for our citizens. I'm sure that you get a lot of reaction. We've done this with more than one firm, and I get reactions from citizens that like, this is the biggest pain, or it went very smoothly, or they don't understand, or that went nicely, and I like the way we do things. So I was waiting to hear that. It is an improvement, and it's better for our citizens.
Yes. Mary Rose Corrigan, Public Health Director. I think it's a matter of more advanced technology that this company uses than the current system. And we only had one other system, by the way. It's been the same since we went outsource. But it's much more advanced. It's totally real-time. If a customer adds a pet to their account, it shows up right away. They can see totals, and they can also see if something's not accurate and let the company know, or of course, call our office. So also, the reminders they give for pet owners are not just by mail. They are email, in multiple forms and letter, and they are in the process of developing text reminders, which would be a really big boost. So I think between the reminders and the platform, it's like a lot of our accounts we have, you have a username and login, and you go in and check things out of your account, and that's where you can update things. The other thing we did in the last year was we added a computer kiosk in our building for those people that don't have that, their own computer, or a way to do it online, and we can actually show them how to do it. If they need assistance doing it, or if they need a place to do it, they can come in our office and do it there. So we're going to hopefully teach people how to do it, too, that aren't used to doing it that way.
I see. And you mentioned that it's less expensive for the city, and a major improvement would be, is this less expensive? Is this going to be less expensive for our citizens?
The license fees will remain the same.
So it's less expensive. What does our cost? What does it cost us to be part of this program? I mean, you mentioned how much it's less. I would just like to share the less with the citizens.
Right. It's about 62%, 3% reduction in software and maintenance expenses. So we're currently paying just about $57,000. And with this, we'll be paying about $17,000 with maybe some additional fees for a total of about $35,000 annually. So from $56,000 down to 35 annually. So the pet license sales to have since 20, we're kind of back to about 2020 level in terms of sales. And I think it's partly a reflection of the difficulty in tracking and using the system. And so we hope to get those numbers backed up because it does support our contract with the Dubuque Regional Humane Society and the Animal Control Officers, their activity in our department, in lieu of using just all general fund for this.
I see. I mean, I would just like to hope that we might consider, whenever there's a price change, it always seems to go up. People would be surprised and pleased. It's even a dollar cheaper to do these licenses. Anyway, that's my two cents. I'm not, we're not in charge of how things, programs are put into practice. But as soon as you said that the city is going to save money on how we do things, which is great, that saves the citizens money right there. But directly, I'd love to share the joy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. May I add my two cents as well about the technology boost here? Is this going to be used at all on the AI platform potentially, where some of the staff time is reduced and a little bit used efficiently in other areas? Because it's kind of on its own application run?
Not that I know of, but I suppose it's a possibility.
So you're not reducing any staff hours and diverting them to other functions while this takes care of its own operation?
I think it's tough to say. There are some areas where we have a little bit more staff time, but it's just reading some records. And I think with the efficiencies, the less phone calls we're getting from citizens who are really confused about what's up with their system, the goal is to have fewer late licenses, which are often caused by, you know, didn't get the reminder, buried in the mail, whatever. And so I think a lot of it will come through that. So like I said in the memo, it's a little difficult to tell, and we know that more people have pets and more people have multiple pets. So that number continues to grow, too. We know in the community, obviously, by your previous discussions.
Okay, so it really sounds like an input and output database as opposed to something that is generating feedback and comments without...
They do quality assurance reports and those kinds of things. How they do that, if they use AI, I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Any others? Well, Mary Rose, thank you very much for your comments and for your and your team's work on this. Motion here is to receive and file and approve of this change. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number four is Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase 2 Award Construction Contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
Mr. Mayor. I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
I'll second. All right, motion by Wethel, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Sejohias is recommending city council award the construction contract for the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase 2, through the adoption of the enclosed resolution to top-grade excavating in the amount of $11,779,540.65, which is 7.25% under the engineer's estimate of $12,700,828.6. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Mr. Resnick.
I would just like to comment, sometimes we only get two or three bids, and it's nice that we got six competitive bids. So I feel very good about the process that we've gone through and the choice that we're making tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And obviously, we have been talking quite a bit about the Old Mill Road Lift Station. So if you've been tuning in at all, you've heard many discussions about it. So we are, in many ways, there's a couple of different issues coming up here tonight that we'll be talking about, and you may just see us voting on them fairly quickly because there's been a lot of discussion. In many ways, we might not have to think too much before we move forward with some of these. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
That motion passes 6-0.
Action item number five is Old Mill Road Lift Station, Phase 3 Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek Middle Fork Consulting Engineering Services RFQ Authorization.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Sprank and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Sejohias is recommending city council approval to release a request for qualifications, or RFQ, to hire a consultant to assist with the development of the Old Mill Road Lift Station, Phase 3 Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project for Catfish Creek Middle Fork. The fiscal year 2026 Proposed Capital Improvement Program, Catfish Creek Sewer Shed Intercept Sewer Improvements, Middle Fork, now referred to as Old Mill Road Lift Station, Phase 3 Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek Middle Fork. Budget includes a total of $23.8 million for the project design and construction with the revenue from state revolving fund loans and sanitary sewer construction funds. The initial project efforts in fiscal year 26 will be for the design and permitting of the project. This project provides for systemic upgrades to the Catfish Creek Interceptor Sewer System, which branches out along the Middle Fork-Catfish Creek. The system will also be upsized along the Middle Fork-Catfish Creek from Old Mill Road, 9.9 miles to the Dubuque Industrial Center West. The Catfish Creek Interceptor Sewer was constructed in circa 1960, extending westward from the Water and Resource Recovery Center, as allowed for the development of nearly 2,500 acres over the last two decades, which includes residential subdivisions of Dubuque Industrial Center West and service to the Dubuque Metropolitan Solid Waste Agency. The existing sanitary sewer was identified as being at or exceeding capacity. The funding request will provide for design permitting and easement acquisition for sewer upsizing along the Middle Fork Interceptor from Old Mill Road to Brunskill Road. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Mr. Resnick.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Sejohias, if you wouldn't mind, I've always been rather curious about consulting engineer services or consulting any services that we, the city comes and uses to improve the project. My question is, do they, the person or company that is selected, do they act as the lead content provider? They've got a lot of expertise in this specific area of engineering. And then how close do they work with your department? And you have experts, obviously, in your department as well. And is it a year-long process? If you wouldn't mind telling me about consulting engineers or, you know, just consulting services in general. Some citizens feel like, well, we've got some great engineers right here. You know, why aren't we taking advantage of that? Could you tell us maybe what I asked and the advantages of using a good consulting service?
Gus Sejohias, City Engineer. So this is a project that's, as you saw, it's like $23 million, and the next one's $13 million, almost $14 million. So they're very extensive. There's going to be some railroad crossings, creek crossings. We could do it in-house if we had the staff, but we want to do this expeditiously. We want to get this so it's ready to bid by next year. We're going to like acquire the easements. We're doing all the survey work that takes a lot of time. We're buying new survey equipment to expedite the survey. So we're going to go out with our staff and go ahead and get all the stuff for the engineers to do. But if we had staff and we want, didn't have a limit on the time, we want to get this done. Because we want to actually bid this and have it all ready to go. So the day the lift station gets completed and we're able to turn on those pumps for the Old Mill Lift Station, we're starting to construct these next two phases. So we can get the appropriate flow that we need out there to service any business that might come in. So we have the expertise to do it in-house. We just don't have enough of them to do it.
And I know this is very important for the growth in that area and development and so many things. So I appreciate the impetus you're giving this. And you're doing all the grunt work that takes so much time ahead of time with your folks digging into this project right away. The consulting engineer firm, well, are they, they have a lot of experience in working with state regulations and that type of thing? Are we working, looking for an Iowa person, or?
No, no, Sarah, we're just going to do an RFP and RFQ and go ahead and interview consultants that possibly could handle a job like this and check their schedule, check their qualifications, and determine who would be the best for this type of project to get both of them ready to bid and shovel-ready in about a year and a half from now.
Is there time sensitivity? Are we using some grant money that needs to be used within a certain time, or we just have the need?
We have the need, the demand out there that warrants us getting the job done as quickly as possible. So we can service all the businesses and potential businesses that are going to come online in the future.
Sure. Thank you for the information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the role, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Old Mill Road Lift Station Phase Four Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek South Fork Consulting Engineering Services RFQ Authorization.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
By Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Sehoyes is recommending city council approval to release a request for qualifications, or RFQ, to hire a consultant to assist with the development of the Old Mill Road Lift Station Phase Four Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek South Fork. The fiscal year 2026 proposed capital improvement program, Catfish Creek Sewer Shed Interceptor Sewer Improvements, South Fork, now referred to as Old Mill Road Lift Station Phase Four Sanitary Interceptor Project, Catfish Creek South Fork, budget includes a total budget of thirteen million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars for the project design and construction with revenue from state revolving fund loans and sanitary sewer construction funds. The initial project efforts in fiscal year 26 will be for the design and permitting of the project. This project provides for systematic upgrades to the Catfish Creek Sanitary Interceptor Sewer System, which branches out along the South Fork Cachefish Creek. The sewer system will be upsized from Old Mill Road along the South Fork Cachefish Creek, six point nine miles, to Dubuque Metropolitan Solid Waste Agency. The Catfish Creek Interceptor Sewer was constructed circa nineteen sixty, extending westward from the Water and Resource Recovery Center, and has allowed for the development of nearly two thousand five hundred acres over the last two decades, which includes residential subdivisions, Dubuque Industrial Center West, and service to the Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency. The existing sanitary sewer was identified as being at or exceeding capacity. The funding request will provide for the design, permitting, and easement acquisition for sewer upsizing along the South Fork Interceptor from Old Mill Road to North Cascade Road. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the role, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is 2025 Iowa Law Enforcement Accreditation Program Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file and view the presentation and most likely applaud.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Turn it over to Chief Jensen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jeremy Jensen, Chief of Police. So I'm pleased to announce that the Dubuque Police Department is now dual-accredited. What that means is, give you a little backstory. A couple of years ago, a group got together that consists, that was put together by the Iowa Chiefs of Police Association and the, or the Sheriffs and Deputies Association. Iowa was one of the few states that did not have a state accreditation program. There was a great minority of that, actually, in the lower third. So group felt strongly about it, formed a committee to start exploring it, and actually made a grant application. I'm part of that committee. Made a grant application to the Department of Justice, got a half a million dollar grant to start this program and to build it into sustainability. It really focuses on agencies that cannot afford nor have the capacity to be accredited, like we are through Kalia. And also, Kalia is a pretty heavy lift. It's four hundred and eighty-four standards. So as we started to develop that, we got the grant and started to develop the program. And in 2025, the grant went live. And we're able to, as part of that, sign up thirty-five agencies in the first year. We hired a manager to run the program and then hired accrediters, accreditation supervisors where people are going out and doing that. Now, for us, it's a formality. We already are accredited. The process literally was, the assessor came and looked at our process for Kalia, which we just, as you know, were just fully accredited again last summer. Really easy for us to step into this. I think for us, it really is a matter of solidarity with other departments in the state. The majority of departments, great majority of departments have ten officers or less in the state of Iowa. So we're one of the bigger agencies. And the second part of it is lead by example. So we were one of the first eight departments to get accredited through this program in the state of Iowa. We weren't the first. Marquette McGregor beat us to it. So, but I'll get to go up in August and present their awards. I'm pretty excited about that, too. So with that, thank you for your support in all we do. And again, just wanted to add this to our resume.
Very well. Thank you very much, Chief. Discussion, Mr. Comments. Mr. Jones.
It would have been really easy to say, ah, we don't need that. We've already got the big accreditation. But you didn't. You chose to engage and to help lift these other departments across the state. And that is leading by example. And Dubuque Police always seems to do that. So congratulations.
Thank you.
So yeah, I bet we do applaud.
We'll wait till comments, and then we'll make sure we do that. Any others? Any other discussion? All right, now we can applaud. Well, Chief, congratulations to you and the entire force. Thank you for all the work that you do. And clearly, you deserve this, and the work shows it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, motion here was to receive and file and speak to the chief and clap. So Adrian, would you call the role, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is Mayor and City Council Compensation Task Force Recommendation.
Move to receive and file and have a conversation about the recommendation.
Second by Wethel.
And a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I'll just read the recommendations submitted by the task force. The Mayor and City Council Compensation Task Force convened on May twenty-first, 2025, to review and discuss potential adjustments to the compensation for the Mayor and City Council. During the meeting, the task force considered several factors, including the roles and responsibilities of the Mayor and Council members, the time elapsed since the last compensation adjustment, salary comparisons with peer communities in Iowa, and the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. After thorough discussion, the task force reached consensus on a recommendation to increase the salaries of the Mayor and City Council members based on the cumulative CPI over the past two years, 2023 being three point four percent, and 2024 being two point nine percent for a total of six point three percent. And so based on this cumulative CPI increase, the task force recommends an adjustment to the Mayor, a specific increase of nine hundred thirty-two dollars, bringing the new annual salary to fifteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars. And for the City Council, a proposed increase of six hundred ninety-nine dollars, which would bring the new annual salary to eleven thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. So if the City Council approved this recommendation, I would prepare an ordinance amendment for formal adoption at a future meeting. And in accordance with Iowa code, the adjusted salaries would take effect on January first, 2026. And the only other thing I wanted to note, as part of the agenda materials that were submitted to the Compensation Task Force, Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson provided a memo that essentially summarized how a salary increase would be funded if one were approved. And as part of that memo, she recommended that in future years, the task force be convened a year earlier than it's currently scheduled to convene. And so that essentially would mean that the next task force would be convened in 2028 rather than 2029. That way, the recommendation can be included in the fiscal year 2030 budget. So essentially, just providing city staff with further advanced notice of the recommendation, so it can be incorporated into that budget at that time. And as part of that, any proposed, even if that recommendation is submitted in 2028, any proposed increase would still take effect on January first, 2030, as required by Iowa law. So that's all I had, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adrian. And thank you for all your work on this. Discussion. Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Well, the CPI is one consideration that they should have taken into account and did. The other consideration that they should have taken into account and didn't was growth in the scope of the responsibilities of each of these positions at the council table, particularly yours, Mr. Mayor. The, some of the public comments that were reported in the media showed a gross misunderstanding and incomprehension of the scope of the mayor's duties these days, specifically with the only difference between the mayor and the rest of the councils, the gavel, the meetings to order and out. That's just not true. I mean, you're gone from Dubuque many, many nights, traveling on our behalf, doing things for us. We've got a full-time mayor for a part-time price and have had for some years because Roy Bill was the same way. So I think they missed, just missed that point. I don't feel any animosity towards the people that worked on this. I think they did some good work, but I just think they, they didn't quite have the whole story and weren't looking at the whole story. And I would suggest that we, instead of adopting the recommendation as it stands, that we set, for the sake of running, that we set city council salaries at twelve thousand dollars a year and the mayor's salary at twenty-five thousand dollars a year, to begin to bridge that gap between what you're worth and what you're being paid for the position of mayor. And I don't want to, I don't want to say you as much as I want to say the mayor, because this isn't about Brad Kavanaugh or any of us sitting here. But the challenge with, the challenge with service in the city council for most of us at this table being retired or being independent farmers, isn't to get to the meetings. And we can make that work in our lives. The challenge is for the guy that wants to run for city council that's got a nine-to-five job and punches a time clock, who has to be leaving his work and losing dollars to serve in the council, that's a real thing. And this compensation has to be enough that it's plausible for anybody in Dubuque to be able to afford to sit here. And that's what, that's what this recommendation doesn't quite do, in my view. I don't, I don't need another thousand dollars a year. I'm doing fine. Most of us don't. But it's not about Rick Jones. It's about the guy that might be sitting here after the next election or the election after that. And that's why I think that we need to bump these up a little bit, particularly the mayors. I've seen firsthand the many hours, I, every time we do council reports, all the things that the mayor is doing and has been doing for a decade on behalf of the city, well beyond gavel on a meeting to order twice a month. The closed sessions that keep us here till eleven, twelve, one o'clock sometimes are, aren't just occasional. It's almost every single meeting. We're here after school, working on development agreements and, and other things because the city is thriving, because the city is moving ahead, because of the drive that, that the mayors and the council members have brought to the table, have brought to Des Moines, have brought to Washington, DC. I think we got to do better than the recommendation. And I do thank the people that worked on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So I'm going to speak as a future bystander here. As you know, I'm not running for reelection. And I spent some time thinking about the compensation comments and the whole structure behind this. And again, we have, I want to thank the panel and Adrian for the work that they have done. And I also appreciate the seven oh recommendation from the commission or from the panel, I should say. And I think as we look at what our roles are, I think we all are, go above and beyond. And the role that we have, the working assumption is that we are primarily volunteer. And our compensation is really not designed to be full-time, and right now, it's not designed to be a competitive salary. Whether that's good or bad, that's up for discussion. But I think what's unique about our council is that we all have a commitment to serve the community and enhance it by our own individual passions and expertise. And so as an example, for me, my expertise and passion is technology. And I am very pleased to represent Dubuque in various national technical forums. And via this participation, it gives me an opportunity to share the most current thinking with the staff and the community. And in my perspective, we all do that in our own way. And we all have our own passions and our own expertise. We take time, all of us, take time out of our busy schedule to participate and represent the city as best as we can. And this includes all of us. We have several hours per week, per month. We have many, many of the activities are traveling to conferences, attending meetings, making presentations, showing support for local organizations. We participate on committees for not-for-profits, and we also attend very many special events. So irrespective of the mayor's role versus the council's role, we are all in this together as a team, providing the service to the community. And so I am looking at this, and I understand, Rick, your comments about the role of the mayor, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, he does have a different role than we do. But I would just agree with the panel's recommendation at this point. We are looking at a budgetary situation here with the city. The cost of living adjustment I think they made is quite prudent. And again, especially considering the budgetary constraints of 2026, I think it's an appropriate increase. I think to make a point on your conversation, I think the calibration might be off. I think that the city council also should be increased at a future discussion, not necessarily at this one. But I think if you're going to be increasing one, you should also be increasing the other significantly because of the fact that this council really does spend a lot of time out in the community. So, but that's the way that it's set up right now. That's the working assumption that we have. And so I really am supporting the six percent increase across. It seems very appropriate at this point in time and juncture.
Thanks, Ms. Farber.
Yeah, as a bystander.
Did you have your hand, sorry, Ms. Rousell, go ahead.
I, I really appreciate the hard work of the task force, the time they took to read and study all the materials. And I totally agree that this, this job, we don't, we don't take it for the money. But it does take time for study and involvement far beyond our biweekly meetings. And I would, I would like to suggest that in future conversations by this task force, that we make sure that they have a full, fuller understanding of the, especially the role of the mayor, but our roles beyond what we do. People see us at the table. They see that this, you know, we come here twice a month and do our, but I don't think people really understand what's expected beyond just sitting at these meetings. And especially for somebody who's thinking about running, I think they need to have a better understanding of that. And as much as I would like to have this increase be more, especially for what I know about what's expected from our mayor, I would like to support the task force because they made their recommendation based on what we sent to them. And in the future, maybe we can send them better or additional information. But at this time, I think I'll support the task force recommendation.
Thanks, Ms. Rousell. Ms. Resnick.
Thank you. So several points here. First of all, I read the newspaper report, and it seemed to me, well, what information are they getting? What's the criteria? Because what was talked about in the Telegraph Herald was not, not things that I thought were going to be considered, such as the political ramifications of a certain amount of money. Personally, I feel like if we were to adjust it at all, I don't think we would adjust it up, even though there's a lot of good reasons for that. So if it's, if they're going to, if people find, I mean, the folks, I appreciate work, who are working on this, I appreciate their viewpoints. But as Ms. Rousell said, we have to do a better job, perhaps, of letting them know how much work it is, and especially the mayor. So I got, I, what I got back didn't look like criteria, instructions, or meeting procedure. It just seemed like, well, let's, let's have a discussion about this. And it can go lots of different ways. And I think everybody who was representing us had our best interests in mind. And they know our hearts in that. We love Dubuque, and we want to serve. The desire for us to serve is greater than our desire for money. And they're right. They're absolutely right. Mr. Jones has a great opinion about, you know, this is not about us. I mean, our time is limited. Some of us are more limited than others. But it's, we want, it's ironic that in a year that we've chosen to give just compensation for City of Dubuque employees, it's, it's more other things that really they're talking about as far as council, as far as their compensation. So I, you know, I read the legal, what they're supposed to do legally, but I didn't see that they were really given direction. I didn't really see that this is what's important. And now if they had said, well, we think they ought to, well, it says CPI is twenty percent, we need to, that's obviously the, and then we decide as a council, you know what? We should cut that to ten percent for our citizens. Citizens would understand that. If we take a six percent recommendation, say, you know what? Ten percent is better. Yeah, I don't know that we can really do that and, or should do that. We talked about our Park and Rec Commission and supporting them. And I think they also, this commission, this task force, had our best interests in mind. And we picked them. And I think they know us very well, that we love to serve the citizens of Dubuque, and they came back with this. I would like to talk about just a little bit, in 1994, when this first started, council salary was six thousand dollars, and the mayor was nine thousand dollars, a three thousand dollar difference. But let's look at it differently. It's fifty percent more. It's 50% more than a, a city council member. And over the years, it's, it's been $3,000 more rather than 50% more. Now, of course, the mayor could just say, you know what? I, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna do these things, extra things. And, you know, citizens of Dubuque, we're just gonna do the best we can with the time I have. But our current, our current mayor and the mayor before don't, doesn't, they don't do that. They say, I'm signing up for whatever I can do to make Dubuque a great place to live. All right? So they, they do all these extra things and just say, yes, 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 until they have a full plate. So I appreciate that maybe in four years from now, this task force will come with, you know, with some directions and talks and say, well, if the council is gonna make, let's say, four years from now, instead of 12,000, it'd be 13,000. Well, then maybe the mayor, let's really put that back to 50% more and, and say, well, that's 19.5 then. This is what we recommend for the mayor and council this year. But they didn't do it this year. They know us and I think they know what we prefer to money. But let's think about the, the people after us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others? Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
So much of what I have learned about council is that the decisions I make, I try to think about not now only. I make decisions about what is five years from now and 10 years from now. And I don't think when I ran for council, I quite understood that. But I understand it a lot better now, that the decisions that we are here for today affect people when we're all gone, when we're not here anymore. And that's really exciting, actually. That's one of the greatest things about this work. And so I, I've thought a lot about this. And as someone in my own career, I have actually had to, in decades prior, fight for pay equity for myself. And that road is not an easy and comfortable road, as a woman especially. And I think after the data was reviewed tonight, I can have folks maybe understand that. The thing is, I, I do work full-time. I'm the only person up here, I think, that is not either self-employed or retired. But I'm proud to do that. I wanted to do that. And I think I offer something very unique because I am that person, because I'm a working mother with school-age kids. I hope that other people will have the opportunity to do this work who have that perspective when I'm gone. I don't do this work for the money, but I can see that a woman moving forward has childcare expenses that potentially she would need to pay for as a single mother. I would love to see her on council one day. I know that there are people who do not have access for transportation the way that I do. And maybe they would like to be on council one day. And so I think that I try to sit with those thoughts, not just about what we're paid, but for those folks in the future I hope will participate in democracy the way we get The, we do not have a strong mayor form of government, but that does not mean that we do not have a mayor that has a different role than our city council members. I could not more, more wholeheartedly state that with a firm, with an affirming, deep feeling for the work that you do in recalling the work that Mayor Buell has done. And the more I learn about where we are today and the positive nature of Dubuque's trajectory, it is because of people's participation, not just council, but to have a mayor who has the foresight to go out and do work that isn't listed on a page. It takes somebody who is not just creative, but a real driving force for what is best for our public good. And so I was really concerned with the comments stated and I felt that they were not reflective. We don't have a strong mayor form of government, but that doesn't mean that you do the same job we do. And then I started to think about, when we consider other places that reimburse and how they reimburse their municipal elected officials, should people who are at large, who have, who run for office for a broader population, should they be compensated differently than people who are ward representatives? That was one thing I thought was curious about maybe some other models. And I'm not advocating we do that. I'm just, I'm just saying, there's a lot of other models that are out there in municipal government that I think in the future would be exciting to consider. But I absolutely feel the mayor should be reimbursed at a higher rate than council. No question. I do think that we need to reimburse city council members. And I do think that it has been four years since this has been considered. I like the idea of being able to transition it so that our staff can better budget for what would move forward. And how great that even, we're making a decision for somebody almost two years from now, you know? I mean, it, it would feel even more clean. It would feel even less part of a decision you're making for yourself. So I do intend to endorse what has been proposed to us. And I'm very grateful for my own representative, but those that agreed to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I think we can all take a little bit of responsibility for the lack of information that they had. I, I know I'd chosen a representative, asked him if he'd served, and that was the only conversation we had about it. I didn't address any of the concerns I addressed tonight with him. And I suspect that, that all the rest of you did the same thing, that you chose someone that you knew would act in the best interest, the best interest of the community. So I'll, I'll take the rip for, for that as well. I, I strongly feel that we need to adjust the recommendation for the mayor's position. However, I'll support what the majority does tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So one, one other comment, and I like to, to, Ms. Wethel kind of led that conversation, I think, or opened up the door to the fact that there are young professionals in the city and those that potentially would like to be sitting where we are, but maybe they just can't afford to do so. And so one of the questions to tee up for future would be, how do we make the pay for the city council and the mayor more competitive so that we can attract some of the younger professionals that are working today? As opposed to someone who quote unquote, doesn't necessarily look for this salary to be something that is competitive enough in a full-time salary. So I think that's something that we should be considering as you talk about information that goes to the next council recommendation for the next panel. Because I think that would give us a better diversity on the panel potentially here. And, you know, and as we are moving forward and thinking about the next group that will be sitting at this table, you know, what is it that we can do to help reinforce the skillsets that will be sitting here in our, you know, as we are not sitting here? So I think that, and I also agree that the, you know, the mayor's salary should be higher. But I also feel that the city council itself, because we do so much, or the, the roles do so much depending upon passions, interests, and the way that we do volunteer, should be adjusted accordingly as well. And maybe that's some way of getting other people that are younger and would like to have an opportunity to sit here and to work with and volunteer and serve with a different kind of a revenue base. And I know that that's a significant budget issue. So that leads it into the 2028 conversation potentially as well. But I think municipal governments have become very important over the last, say, decade or so, more so than it has been in the past. And there's just much more business and energy going on that needs to be addressed. And I think that if we can somehow calculate or adjust the salaries or, or do something to, to recognize that, then there's opportunity for us to have a, a different, you know, more diverse group here on, on the panel. I'm not sure I explained that right, but the idea is to think about how to remunerate in a, in a way that there's more community representatives that feel comfortable, the residents feel comfortable, sitting here at the table or teeing themselves up to serve and run for real election here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As one of the other younger folks on council that has a full-time job, over the years, I've tried to think of like, I don't, I, I serve at, I serve at the, I serve our citizens. But I had a previous employer that was very, was, allowed me to be flexible with my time. I would though use at least a week and a half or some, a year of vacation time to serve the citizens of the City of Dubuque. I didn't complain about that. I don't complain about that. But to kind of go off with Ms., with Ms. Farber was mentioning, it's gonna be diff, it is, can be difficult for a young professional to want to get into city politics, to want to be involved in our city government to the level that we currently serve the city, our citizens. When I, I helped out a few weeks ago, just before we actually went out to DC, a, a neighbor of mine with the area agency on aging, and I helped him fill out the form because he's very technically inept. The, his median income was $15,500. I would really like to see the mayor making considerable more than that. And I would agree with, with Rick's recommendation of possibly $25,000 because the mayor does a considerable amount, more amount of work than the rest of us. But I'd also like to see council members be raised a little bit more. I would be more than willing to accept what the counts, what the task force recommended. I also can think about what Mr. Jones had mentioned, also about talking to our task force recommend, our task, the people that we selected. I literally didn't say anything to my person because I didn't want to taint the waters or confuse them or give them a misleading impression. They know what I do from my volunteerism, from other interactions, so they were very aware of what I did. One other thought I got to thinking about, we, since this has always been, I've always seemed in my neighborhood, this is deemed as somebody who's a retired, this is like a part-time job for somebody who's retired. There is an idea, we could peg it theoretically to whatever the increase that folks are given when they go on social security. Whatever that percentage is, you could raise our salary by that much. Then you have another outside agency that's not affiliated at all. That was an idea I was pondering. That way folks could at least, yes, it's not going to be a high amount, but it's, that's what the federal government gives, that's what we get. So, that was the thought I was tossing around. I will go with whatever majority agrees with. I would personally like to see that the mayor be compensated more for that position because it is a high expect, there are high expectations of the mayor regardless. So, that's all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones. One last comment. Moving it up, moving that evaluation up a year makes all the sense in the world from a budget standpoint. It's the responsible thing to do. Just wanna make sure that somebody says that other than Adrian today.
Yeah, I know, I want to hear what you, you think. But before you do, I do want to add that I agree with that. And so that maybe it will be recalculated a year sooner than it would have been, so in three years rather than four. And I, I hope we can agree all together. So I think we're putting you, Mr. Mayor, in a, in a tough position. I think we need to, I'm hoping that we could be unanimous in this. And I, I do want to tell you that I am going to vote for the 6.3%. And then hopefully in three years, this, this task force will recommend a more reasonable number for future council members. That's, that's what I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thanks first of all for all your comments. So let's first, I'm just gonna summarize kind of a couple of high-level points that I think are really important that, that I heard multiple times here. One is, we definitely want to do this a year earlier next time around. 2028, let the budget process work itself out. I think this is a really good idea. So I appreciate Jenny Larson coming forward with that request and making that clear. I also heard very clearly that the city council at that time needs to give the task force more direction. One of the challenges of public servants is we don't often, I think, describe the work that's going on, on a weekly basis of what we're doing. You know, I mean, I, I don't think that's entirely clear. Having some sort of, like, some sort of numerical way of showing the time that is spent and things like that, so people have a better understanding of what a city council position and a mayor position really means, in Dubuque specifically, would be helpful. So I did hear that. I also heard making the pay more competitive for people who do have full-time work. That, that would allow for the potential to have, I think, the way Ms. Farber put it, a more varied group of voices in the, at the table to be able to do that. You do see this a lot in Iowa in particular, there's a lot of folks, and there's nothing wrong with retirement, I'm sure it's great, but there's a lot of folks that are retired in this position. And we see that even in the legislature, it's, it's really common. And I think it would be very useful for a community, especially one that is growing and is, you know, potentially as it grows, getting a little bit younger along the way, to have some diversity in age in that way. We just kind of naturally fall into that in this group more or less, but I think it would be nice to build that in a little bit more. Last thing that I'm gonna throw in there is I think it would be useful to add this to a governance session. You know, we have this opportunity every year to do a goal setting and to put this in governance to be able to have maybe some help from, from Lyle, our consultant, to walk us through how other councils look at this, how they might be able to give us some guidance on how could we put this together so that a future task force can, can actually be more informed? I think that could be useful.
Can I just add to that? Perhaps job specs or definitions could be added to that governance discussion?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, like some sort of a job, yeah, some more specifics on what that would look like. So I'll, I'll just close by saying that I, I very much appreciate the, the sentiments that, that several of you have shared. And I, I appreciate the recognition that the, that this position comes with a, some, some different responsibilities than, than what a council member position comes with. I agree. I, I absolutely agree with that. In no way can I in good conscience advocate at this moment for a, a much higher increase than what we've been recommended by the task force. I, I think that that's, it's a fair increase right now based on the information that was shared with them and the things that were shared. Maybe potentially when I know that it's my time to walk away from this particular position that I'm in, I'll have some other different things to say about that and recommending what a future council might consider. I, I do want to point out though that one thing that hasn't been brought up by anyone here is the, the numbers that are in other cities in Iowa. You know, based on our population and based on what other cities are like, we're pretty similar, actually. Our breakdown is pretty similar. I don't think we are so different or so special, even though I'd like to think that, you know, we are in, in a lot of ways, and I think Dubuque is punching way above its weight than some of the other cities are. I, I, I don't think we should get too far out of whack than what the rest of the state is. I don't think that's entirely fair either. So I think we need to consider that when, whatever we do in the future. This recommendation that we have before us right now from the task force is absolutely, I think, in line with what is going on across the state. And I think that was considered by the folks that we, that, that were represented there or representing us there.
Can I just make one more comment?
One more, and then we're gonna move on.
So, so what, what I like about this council is number one, like, as you always say, we have earnest, honest debate and discussion. But I also think that this is a leading edge group. And why not be different than the state of Iowa? You know, talk about dog parks tonight, why not be different than the state of Iowa and have a few more? Or have different options for pet, pet family and families? And so I, I disagree to, disagree a touch here in this conversation in that we should feel if we want to be different, we should be. Because I really do think we have some unique things going on here. And, you know, there's a talent pool out there waiting, if you will, if we can somehow get it set up correctly for them.
That's a fair point, Ms. Farber. Thank you. Okay. So the motion here is to receive and file and discuss. So, yeah, Mr. Jones.
Let me revise the motion, move that we receive and file and adopt the task force recommendation.
All right. We got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel to receive and file and adopt the task force's recommendation. And I don't think I said at the end there, thank you to all the members, specifically in the task force. You know, we each appointed someone, so, you know, particularly thank you to the person who was able to represent my voice in that, in that, but then all of us at the same time. All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Yeah. Excuse me.
Excuse me. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next, our council member reports.
All right, what do we got?
Mr. Mayor. Last time we met on the nineteenth, I stayed up late and went down to welcome the, our heroes back from the honor flight, both Monday and Tuesday night of that week. It's a worthwhile, worthwhile late night out. I do very few of those, except here, but we've already had that discussion. It's pretty happy people getting off that plane and getting into Dubuque, because Monday night was a real challenge for them. We, you recall, we had some pretty heavy thunderstorms over our airport. They circled and circled and circled, and the report was that they were going to have to fly to Chicago to refuel.
Oh, boy.
And a number of people left, and then, then they suddenly landed. They found a hole and got on the ground, so, pretty, pretty interesting thing. Wednesday, as I know all of you did, spent an hour on the phone with our consultant, which is basically the first hour spent on the budget for 2027 that we'll be working on in our fall consulting, or fall, fall goal-setting session. Also, the twenty-first, we had a Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency board meeting. There's dirt movement out there, the customer convenience centers underway. Twenty-seventh was the DRA board, and then Mr. Mayor, you gave an excellent speech in representation at the Pump and Gate Project kickoff down at the, and Laura was there as well. Twenty-eighth, I went to an open house at Hills and Dales, and oh my God, that place is really spruced up and looking better. I had the honor of being their board chair when we rebuilt the center, the place, we literally had kids almost sleeping in dresser drawers, but it was built for little bitty children that were, nobody thought could live to be big kids. And now it's full of big kids, because Hills and Dales invented how to care for this special population and have excelled at it. So I was really honored to be there. And Mr. Mayor, you gave an excellent send-off speech to company of the one thirty-third. Sixty-seven Dubuques got on buses and headed out to, to go to Syria ultimately after a few weeks in Georgia, I'm sorry, Louisiana.
Louisiana.
And they're meeting up with eighteen hundred other Iowans that are headed out for this deployment in the Middle East. So that's kind of a, kind of a big deal, and another really good thing to be at, really felt good leaving there that I had taken the time to get out there, so. That's what I've been up to. Going to disappear for a couple of weeks, take a boat ride, so probably won't see you on our next council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Rousell.
Thanks. As Mr. Jones said, we, I did a preliminary goal-setting meeting with our consultant, and I just wanted to say thanks to the residents who are already starting to send in comments for goal-setting and hope people will continue to do that, because it's really helpful. I attended a board meeting and executive committee for Dubuque Main Street, and I want to invite everyone to attend the thirtieth anniversary of Dubuque and All That Jazz this Friday, June seventh, from five to eleven, under the town clock. There'll be food vendors, music, merchandise, a good time to see friends and coworkers. On May twenty-seventh, I attended the Dubuque Area Congregations United meeting on food insecurity, and Katie was there as well. And they talked about the food provider network that's led by Jason Nissas at the Community Foundation, and it was just a very sober reminder of the growing need for food for families in our community. So keep those people in mind and know that there's good work being done in partnerships.
Thanks, Ms. Rousell. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, since we last met, I too met with our consultant, who basically, so I got to do dreams of what we want to do the next year and the next five years, which is always wonderful to, to think that far in advance, as well as, that was that week, and then, of course, there was Memorial Day in there for folks. And then I know there was a cleanup in, in the Washington Neighborhood Association. I unfortunately wasn't able to make that, but I know that they made that part of my neighborhood much prettier, so looking forward, looking, that was great work that they did this upcoming week. I also was at the DRA meeting as well. And then, of course, this upcoming week, I'll have two Neighborhood Association meetings. I know First Fridays is happening. Laura mentioned about music on Main. Of course, Saturday, I'll be running around at something at the town clock, plus, at the town clock for all day. And then this upcoming weekend is also the showing at, for Fly By Night, their wonderful local artist group. They're going to be doing the Glass Menagerie this weekend and next weekend, so if folks want to see some art in the neighborhood, go for that, so, yeah. Otherwise, as usual, always something going on in the city.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So I want to give a shout out to the Dubuque Museum of Art. This is their final weekend before they are closing down for their restoration and rehabilitation. So there are multiple activities coming up this weekend. And Laura, I will be there on, with our food truck on Friday at the event, and hopefully I can stay awake until eleven o'clock when they, when it ends, and look forward to that. And then I'm also working with the League of Cities on a presentation that I'll be giving in two weeks. And so I will be here virtually on that Monday at our next meeting, because I will be in Washington DC, getting ready for the Amazon Civic Tech Conference, and will be looking forward to speaking on behalf of Dubuque and talking about our data center, talking about our AI innovation and our applications and all the things that we're doing for efficiency for the city. So I look forward to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I do want to speak just a minute about the planning meetings that we have with Mr. Sumac for our goal-setting. First of all, yes, I already am having so many people reach out to me with great ideas and their passions for goal-setting, which I really appreciate and keep them coming, I guess, is my message. We started out with Mr. Sumac really speaking about all the things that you talk with us about all year long. And so just know that those passions and those concerns, we hear them, and that translates into that preparation that we do. I know myself, and I think most of my council colleagues, spend hours preparing for that initial meeting about what we're going to go to bat for, a little bit about the data behind that, and, and where our passions lie for our community and our, who we represent. Yes, the Dubuque Area Congregational, Congregations United meeting on food insecurity, really, of course, it's a very prominent concern that we have in our community, but to be in a room with people who care so much that they show up, they show up to learn what they can do, they show up to talk about the work they have done, and so I just really was, I really appreciated the opportunity to join them. I had my Dubuque County Early Childhood Board meeting last week. I feel great about the trajectory of where we're going with Dubuque Early Childhood, and we're really trying to allot our funding with community needs, collaborating with Dubuque Community School District on their needs, looking into brain health needs, specifically looking into how we can sponsor programming and actually staff to go into early childhood spaces, probably about three, with one individual who has extensive brain health training, in hopes that we can add to what is much needed in the brain health realm of support. And so that's something exciting and a new position that we're looking at dedicating specific funds to. And then I want to say congratulations to the graduates. Senior and Hempstead were this weekend. There may have been some temporary tattoos attached to a Hempstead family members that made it out of my order from the internet. Just to say, it's exciting to be around seniors who are graduating. It's such a blessing. They are, they are full of life, they are full of passion, and I just wish everybody who's a graduating senior this year, first of all, great job making it, all your hard work, and good luck in your next journey. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Very quickly, so I was out of country for the last two weeks, but it really emphasized the importance of wayfinding when we're in these different locations. My wife and I were able to find out where we're going, how to get there quickly and safely, and knew so much about where we're going and how to get there. And then we got back to Chicago and tried to get around, it's like, we didn't know, the signage was very different, and everybody's looking at each other in a confused way. And so it's nice to have fresh eyes, come into Dubuque and see, you know, if I'm a visitor here, you know, how would I get to the big attractions that people would like to do? Let's, let's, let people know. As, as I have mentioned several times, when we came in nineteen eighty-four, it took us about five years to figure out where things were in Dubuque, and it was fun for us because we had little babies, so we just put them in the back and just tried to drive around and get home. Drive around Dubuque and then try to get home. And because, I mean, it, it's confusing, Dubuque is for a lot of people, including me. So if that's something we might want to look at, and maybe it's been done, but I appreciate the big signs that we have now for streets, and maybe think again about international people coming to visit Dubuque, because they will be coming. Mississippi is a fantastic draw, and Dubuque is the, the great city on, on the Mississippi. People are going to want to come here. So something to think about for us is wayfinding in Dubuque. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Well, really briefly, on that note, there's a map in our store, and it has all the pins of the people who have visited, and every single continent except for Antarctica is covered in pins. So they're already here. Folks are already coming to Dubuque. All right, I'll go as quick as I can here. Last time we met, if you remember, we had just gotten back from Washington DC. Two days after our last meeting, I got back on a plane to go back to Washington DC for less than twenty-four hours to represent the state of Iowa this time, as the Iowa League of Cities president. The National League of Cities does a fly-in every single year for state league presidents. Saw some of the same people, saw the White House Intergovernmental Affairs Team, saw the Intergovernmental Affairs Team from the Department of Transportation. It was good to be able to see those folks. Also, the EPA was there represented. We talked a lot about FEMA. There was a lot of FEMA discussions. It's a very active discussion in DC right now, and a lot of the restructuring and how these things can actually be more efficient, efficient and effective for local government. So it was a, it was a great opportunity to be able to be in that discussion with other states from across the country, too. And it was also a great opportunity to say, hey, back again just one week later, and be able to talk about the same things that we just talked about. So I was able to reiterate the things we hit on the week before. Marshalee's Independence Day is always so much fun, and I always appreciate the invitation to speak there and be a part of that, and was able to go and do that again this year. I didn't hear anybody mention the Memorial Day Parade, which was fantastic down on Schmidt Island and the presentation afterwards. Gates and Pumps kickoff was there, too. Bluff Strokes, we did a ribbon cutting at Bluff Strokes. That is a really cool program. If you get a chance, go down and see a new addition to the arts community there. And then, just going back to the final thing, that one of the things Mr. Jones mentioned, you know, every once in a while, in these roles, you get a phone call that you do not feel quite worthy to accept the invitation. And to send off the, the members of Alpha Company, our National Guard unit, and speak to their families directly was one of those moments for me. Didn't feel quite, didn't, sometimes you're, sometimes I'm just Brad, and I, it still kind of sticks with you. And then you realize, no, you're, you're the mayor and you, you need to speak to these families in a way that, that is as respectful as you can possibly get. And what I said to them that night was, you know, I can only imagine, because I've never been in this role, but I can only imagine what you must be feeling right now, everybody who's here. But I want you to know that while, while you are gone, and your families, while you were here, and your, your loved ones are away for a year, we are going to be right here doing everything we can to make this place better when they return. And that felt good to be able to say that, because that is exactly what I think we're doing as we meet every single day. So if you get a chance and you know a family that's been affected by this deployment, hold them closer this next year and, and help them out, and let's all do a good job of taking care of each other. But thank you, especially for the service of Alpha Company and the service of their families, so. With that, closed session coming up, so I didn't obtain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the city council go into closed session in accordance with chapter twenty-one point five of the Code of Iowa to discuss confidential records pending litigation and purchase or sale of real estate.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Krenner Brumway. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Motion passes seven zero. We are in closed session.